Wow. Okay. It's Tuesday, November 25th. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Abington School Committee. And we're going to have our salute to the flag. And immediately following that, we're going to have a moment of remembrance for Jerry Cochran, who, as most people know, passed away recently. He was 38 years in the Abington School System as a teacher, coach, educator. He was the -- taught social studies, worked in the media, summer school. He also served as a selectman and as library trustee.
The religion seems to defy the United States of America. In truth, the public falls for its sins. My nation, my beloved, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And we start each of our meetings reading the mission statement of the Abington Public Schools. The mission of the Abington Public Schools is to provide all students with relevant, challenging educational experiences to prepare them to be engaged responsible citizens and members of the global community. And next, we're going to have our hearing of visitors.
He's on the agenda, so you can bring him up.
None will move on?
Ellen, if I could just say, you know, about Jerry Cochran was a dear friend to so many people in town. But I think sometimes, I mean, he was just a very special person. He was a friend to a lot of people. But there was one thing, you know, Jerry cared about education, cared about kids. And that's what teachers, principals in Abington are all about. I mean, the principals that are here tonight. And there's the little things in life that mean a lot. And they're, to me, it's really what they do and why they're here is, I take, look at as a vocation. And just a simple thing about Jerry, he was appointed the golf coach in 1964. He still had that letter. It's those little things in life that, and that's why people go into teaching, they're educators, and that's why they're here. And I, you know, I just, as we go through these policies and the budget and everything, I just want people always to remember, it's like why teachers go into teaching and the calling that it is, and it's very special. I mean, Jerry was a very special person. The people in the Abington School System are very special. And they take care of our children, they educate them. And I just, you know, Uncle Jerry, rest in peace, but thank you for the example that you've set for so many people that have followed him and the people that we have now in the system. Thank you.
Okay. So at this, we're going to go on to the reading and approval of our minutes. We have the October 28 minutes in your packet. Give it a little chance to look them over.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Sean, come on.
Um, just going to go over. We have Mr. Sean Riley here. He's in.
Make a motion.
To take it out of order?
Yeah.
We've never done that before. It doesn't mean we shouldn't. Is that true?
Do we need to make a motion to go out of order?
Uh, I don't think we do. No.
Without objection, Chair, are we supposed to take it out of order?
No objection.
Do we want to give Sean a microphone?
I can talk, yeah, I'm sorry.
That was a really, that was probably not, that was a dumb question, right?
Problem with that, you'll never get rid of them.
Thank you. I'm just here on behalf of the Abington Greenway Boosters requesting the school committee's formal vote to accept a gift from the boosters of a new sign at the end of the high school driveway. A little over 20 years ago, the boosters raised money to purchase the sign that's there now. And as I like to say, the sign's getting old and the guy who changes the sign's getting old. So we're trying to upgrade it to a digital sign. And we have successfully raised money from over 20 donors, businesses and families, raised just about $20,000 to purchase a two-sided digital sign. And we'll still have on top of it, "Welcome to Abington High School." And we're also going to add town offices and libraries, because right now, there is no directional sign out there for the town offices and library. Like the existing sign, the boosters like to make this gift to Abington High School. And we've also received gifts, in-kind gifts, where this will be also dressed up with some nice brickwork around the sign. And we hope to start that work upon your acceptance of this gift as early as later this week or next week, with the actual installation of the digital sign probably sometime in January.
We have our informational packets. Anybody had any questions for Sean, or?
Are there any associated maintenance costs with this that the school department will have to assume?
No, sir. Just more of an ease-of-use issue. It will be controlled from the high school. It's not actually wireless, so no one can tap into it. It's actually radio. So it's limited as to who can adjust it. And just to anticipate another question, right now, it'll say, "Welcome to Abington High School." We'll be able to later change that piece of the sign out for the, when the new school is built and we can change, so for the name of the new school, Abington Middle, Middle High School, whatever, we'll be able to change it at that time.
The old sign is going to be taken away?
Yeah. It would, likely it'll be, it'll be taken off premises so that the, the brickwork can be done. And then, the brick will probably be done within the, depending on the weather, within the next week or so. But the new digital sign won't be available for sometime in the beginning of the middle of January. We might bring back the main body of the existing sign, just so we have a temporary sign, so I can keep doing what I do. And then, when the digital sign comes in, we'll just swap it out. The signs are the exact same size, so there's no real change to what you see, other than how you change the sign.
Are there any restrictions on what can be put on the sign, as far as?
Yes. And it's, it's more, it's run through the school. I volunteer for the school doing that. So it's essentially what we've done in the past, since there's only two panels, it's been a school activity. The boosters initially bought this well before the town hall and library built in order to promote games and, you know, booster sports events and school events. After the town hall library was constructed and this became more of a town governmental center, we occasionally put up more town meetings, town-wide events, library events. But usually, it's always the school that had precedence if it was a school event. With the digital sign, obviously, we have the ability to change it and have multiple messages, although I wouldn't recommend you have 15 messages, because then it just becomes a blur. And the zoning board has put as a condition that the sign can't change its text any less than one minute every sign, which I wouldn't, you wouldn't want to do it that quickly, because then you just don't read it.
We have an agreed-upon protocol with the town hall that all messages from any town department, other than the school department, any department other than the school department, will go through the town manager. He'll provide the exact text for that. That'll be represented as a town message, whether it's from the treasure collector, the park and recreation, or highway department, or whomever. And then, through the school department, everything will go through the high school principal and the principal's office. And it will be events, calendar, nature, announcements such as that. We will stay away from personal messages or, or anything, anything like that.
Yeah. I don't see the message content changing much. It's just that, right now, I can only put, for example, you know, the football game up. And now, I could put the football game up and the cheerleading competition and basketball practice, or whomever's running the show.
In the terms of the school department, the athletic director would provide that message to the high school main office. They'd be able to post those things. The drama program would be published through, or a teacher, or an activity, or a club would be able to post their message through the high school office.
Now, the, go ahead.
I was just going to say, so with your vote to accept the gift, we'll get to work.
Now, the, the money that was raised from, you said 20 different donors?
Just over 20.
Okay. Now, is that, do they want to be recognized? They want to be acknowledged for this, or?
What we had talked about through the administration was that those who would donate a certain minimum number, when the sign was erected, eventually, we would have a thank-you message up there to our donors and list them for two reasons. One, to publicly thank them. And two, to let the general public know that this was a donated sign. This was not money that was found in the school budget, but it is, like the existing sign, a donated sign. The donations were collected by the boosters, and the boosters is making the presentation to you. And some of the donors would like to remain anonymous, so those names won't appear on the sign. We'll be, the boosters will be sending thank-you notes to all of the donors.
So internally, for the district, will we be a procedure in place as far as who's going to be responsible for getting the signs up there? Oh, excellent.
I've got additional copies for other members. This is an internal communication between Terry Sullivan and I that just describes basically what I, more specifically, what I, what I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, that it'll be controlled through the high school office. Athletic director, drama program will go through Terry in a timely fashion, so people have time for the notice. And I know I made copies. That was my copy, but you guys can have it.
So this will negate my ability to sit in great chow and watch you at nine o'clock at night on a Sunday, changing it in the snow?
And no longer will have to shovel the sign. Thank you for your prior assistance, Mr. Terry, for lack thereof.
Well, as long as a snowman goes out there next to it.
I have a similar correspondence through an email with the town manager, as I described, about the towns. They have, the town manager's up to, it's up to the town manager to vet messages from the town. But I do have an agreement with him about how we'll receive them and quote his text so that we get the town messages right.
But it's nice, too, you can use it in an event of an emergency, or, you know, when we've had large events in town with all, you know, traffic routes and all. It's a great, it's a very visible sign. And a lot of people see it, so a lot of people get their information. In case the kids don't bring the information over from the school, they can read it off the sign.
It's nice when the report cards went home today, it's listed up there.
Right. And hopefully, we'll have some congratulatory notices on the night of December 6th on the existing sign, if it's still there. That's the Super Bowl night.
Can you move that, Sean?
So we'd need to make a motion to accept.
Can I, before we make that motion, can I just put it back on the school committee, that we still need a donation policy? We do not have anything when we accept gifts. And this came up back in the spring, and we still don't have anything. I think we need some, some guidance on that.
I'll make a motion that we accept the sign.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
So only because you've accepted it, can I just say the following thing? I want to publicly thank you, all of the donors, but specifically you, not, not to shadow, not that you shadow them in any way, but Sean, it's a wonderful addition to that boulevard. And when you drive up, that's the kind of thing that any school department wants people to see, something that's going to look that professional, that sharp, communicate messages to people. It's just, thank you very much. You could probably wallpaper your office with thank-you letters I've written you, so I don't want you to feel as though it's.
No, we're very excited about it. It's going to be a really nice classy upgrade for the school department and really for the town hall and library. And I, I'd like to thank the people who donated. It was last Christmas, I jokingly put a message up there and said, "Dear Santa, all I want for Christmas is a digital sign." And I started getting phone calls of people who wanted to donate. And I said, "All right, this is an opportunity." And when we actually formally organized it, it was amazing how many people stepped forward to donate. And I'd like to thank them all, and we will thank them privately, but it was a great community effort.
Well, thank you, Sean, for all the years of working on it. I mean, I mean, it was, it's amazing driving by. Kids and I used to get a big kick out of this to Sean.
I heard you heckling me a number of times.
Well, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Sean?
Sean.
Oh, I can leave those for you guys to take home. Election, Super Bowl, they run.
Right.
Yeah, again. Yep. So.
If anybody, we could say, if anybody wants one, boosters sell them $20 of my arms.
Sean would like it to be known that those signs are available at his office that you see on cable in front of the podium for $20, contact Sean Riley.
And the money goes to the boosters.
And the money goes to the Greenway Boosters, not Sean Riley. So back to the agenda, we have a presentation of the 2014 MCAS results, grades three through 10. I want to thank Dr. Gonzales, Ms. Salvetti, and Ms. Fedorowitz for providing you this update on our data.
Hi, good evening. I just want to first say congratulations on the new building. That is a huge success for the district and a lot of hard work went into that, so congratulations. So tonight, Liz, Diane, and myself are going to be presenting the 2014 MCAS data. We're going to review and basically give a summary overview this evening, so if you have additional questions, we can either take them after, or if you need anything else, we can get that to you. So a quick overview, historical performance, we're going to look at over the last five years. We're going to look at cohort performance. These are both similar to last year. We're also going to look at something somewhat new, which is growth data. We're going to have a discussion about our level-three status, look at some data conclusions and recommendations. So just as a quick recap, quick reminder, as to what is tested each year. ELA is tested every year, grades three through eight, and then grade 10. If you can see, the red X is up there in grades four, seven, and 10. Those are the long composition years. Math is tested three through eight, and then again at grade 10. And science, technology is tested in grade five, eight, and then grade nine, which is biology. So I just, before we start, I just want to point out three items before we get started. First, when I, when we use the term proficiency, that's going to include both the proficient and advanced scores. Also, if you take a look at the line graphs, the, the actual line graphs up there are the, that's the state data. The bar graphs are the Abington data. And if you take a look at the bar graphs on the left, the ones underneath, it says W and NI, that's warning and needs improvement. Our preference is that those bars are below the lines, so below the state average, and then our proficient and advanced would be above the state average. So for science, we're going to start with science, historical performance data. We generally mirror the state. We saw a dip last year in 2013, but a slight gain in 2014. One thing to keep in mind, and we'll address this later, is that the science curriculum is evolving with the state, and they haven't finalized exactly what they're doing. So we're, in a sense, kind of chasing them, but being proactive and trying to stay a little bit in advance of them as well. So we want to keep our curriculum updated so we can move forward with how they're moving forward.
As the data suggests, except for the 2011 scores, our warning failing scores have been below or better than the state. Our scores for needs improvement, proficient, advanced are consistently below or at state average. Historically, you can also see that state averages are also low, especially the advanced scores. For the grade 10 science MCAS, which is a subject-specific biology test, for our students taking this bio MCAS, you can see that our scores have been consistently better than the state for the warning failing, needs improvement, and proficient. And for this year, our 2014 scores for the advanced and proficient combined exceed the state scores by 9%. Okay. Moving on to math, historical performance, district versus state?
Can I just ask a quick question? There's three slides here. What do they all mean? What do they all mean? What does it mean? There's, there's numbers here. Is this, what is, what do, what do you feel this means? How are we doing?
Do you want to do that now, or later, or?
Well, I mean, we're looking at the science one. I just got three slides. And it's like, I'm not trying to take people out of order, but it's like, it throws out, it's out there. What does it mean? These are numbers. There's, there's charts, what's?
So what this is, is a comparison to the state average?
Because we, because we get a bunch of these. These slides go on and on. And it's like, but if we go through all of them, what does it mean? That's what I'm trying to understand. It's like.
It's a, it's a comparison to the state averages.
Right. But what does it mean? If you have children in warning and needs improvement, and there's a big gap there, what does that mean for the kids there? What are we doing to, to make this better? It's like, because you can, we can keep going through this, and we can do this, but there's, there's, there's got to be 20 of these.
So that comes at the end of the presentation?
I'm just trying to preempt this, because it's like, I, I don't, we can just keep going on all night and just presenting numbers, but what does any of it mean?
So that's coming at the end of this presentation.
So what we're going to do first is go through the data analysis piece, and then we're going to talk about the variation within MCAS, and then the recommendations.
Right. But you just went through three slides. And all I'm asking is that, I didn't, what does it mean? What are you, what are you trying to tell me? If you didn't have these slides here, what would you tell me? How are we doing? Do we need these slides? Do we need these slides in the presentation? That's all I'm asking. What do we need to, what do we need to know?
In, in general, with our MCAS scores, what we're looking at for science, since that's what we're discussing at the moment, we have, for example, grade five, we have a culmination of our pre-K through five curriculum that all rolls up into the grade-five science test. At this point, for grade five, we're looking at needing to improve our curriculum and needing to improve our test scores in science. Although we've shown some improvement this past year, we do need to continue moving forward with our curriculum and also keeping up with how the state is evolving with their curriculum. Because at this point, the state hasn't decided what curriculum they're going to use. So we, in a sense, we're kind of chasing that as we go. We have an idea of what they're going to use. And so, for example, at the elementary school level, we, we're putting in some inquiry-based science. And this is going to support the curriculum piece, and we're going to continue to add to that as the state evolves. But right now, what we're looking at is our science data. We need to improve our science data. And what we're doing and putting in place for this year and moving forward, our, our next three-to-five-year plan is to improve the curriculum so it's aligned with the state curriculum. But right now, we don't know what the state curriculum is going to be 100%.
And that'll be adopted the next school year.
Okay.
They haven't decided.
They've been trying to decide the last few.
Right. And that, that all makes sense to me, but it just, it just, we go through these charts, and I feel someone has concerns, like, there's a lot of them here.
There's a lot of them. It's a lot of data.
It's a lot. But it's sort of like, as a school committee, I'm just trying to figure out, it's like, well, what do I really need? I mean, I take from it that, you know, we need to improve the science data, and we need to update the curriculum, the science curriculum.
I think that when we look at all of these slides, there are three basic positions that Abington Public Schools can be in, in any subject at any grade. We're either at as an average behind the state, we're the same as the state, or we're ahead of the state. So each one of these slides is going to represent, are we moving toward mastery at the same rate, behind the rate of the state, or at the head of the rate of the state? So when we look at the relationship between the bars and the line, you're going to find out, are we the same, better, or worse, in a general sense? So that's what each one of these slides mean.
Right. I, I understand that, but.
So what happens is, we're looking at the overall performance, and then we can get into the nuts and bolts of item types and particular skills that our kids are performing better than the state or worse than the state. And what we'll do at the end, after we talk about growth, is say, "So, what's the variation? Why are we different from the state? Either better or worse or the same?" And then, we're going to say, "If we want to improve our performance, these are the things that I think we need to do in science, math, and English, to improve our students' opportunity, to move more students toward proficiency and advanced." And we do have that at the end. I understand that the graphs together look like a bunch of pictures that are sort of naked and without a lot of information. But they do tell us whether we're the same, better, or worse than the state. And that's overall, sort of what we're concerned about in terms of our pace. And then, we can get into the weeds of item types and recommendations, but it's good to get a sense kind of plus, minus, or equals, as you look at each of the slides that people go through. And I would ask questions when we're less than the state, and I would want to know who to thank if we're ahead of the state. That's what I would look at in each, if that would help to move through the slides more efficiently, to give some context.
So as you look at these graphs, if there was an area that we were inordinately out of whack with the state of Massachusetts, you would start asking questions deeper with the data about why are we having, why are we seeing that difference from the state? Not that we just want to meet the state average, but it's the benchmark that we have for comparison, because all children in the state in grade, in the tested grade took the same test.
But I just feel, as a school committee, why aren't we starting with what the issues are and the recommendations? And if you want to see the data, here's the data. That's your job. That's everybody's job here, to look at the data. That's, that's my feeling. It's like, because you can present all the charts you want, I'm not going to stand, but if you tell me, "We need to update our science curriculum," that's something we, someone can put their hands on.
You're going to see slides for each content area that are going to say exactly that. But we want to give you the sense of better, worse, same, before we do that.
Out of a sense of diligence, these people have put this together to provide an overview of information to the school committee. And I don't know, and I absolutely respect what you're looking for from this data, but we have to, we, I think, I feel responsible that we show the committee, you know, a lot of information, and then let the committee decide as a committee, how much more or less you want.
Right. And I'm not trying to be difficult, but my concern is, we've got 30-something pages of charts. We've got four or five on recommendations.
Well, what I'd like to tell you is, we would like to do 20 seconds to 30 seconds per slide, so we can get to those slides of recommendation.
That sounds good.
And that's the pace that we would really like to go at and the pace that we rehearsed. So if we could do that, 30 seconds per slide, we could spend a lot more time on those three slides with the recommendations.
That's fine with me.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And just, just add, I, I like the data. I, I like the data upfront, because I can take a quick look and say, "This is, this is below state average, this is above state average." I know what it's going to be, and then I'm going to be looking for you to make recommendations as to where we can go and do better.
It's, in, in other districts, it's generally, this is a general presentation, in good practice, to go through datas, because people generally ask for the data and then recommendations. But we can, you know, we can adjust in the future as well, based on what the committee would like to do.
Yeah. This is my opinion on it. Sorry, I don't mean to get you off.
So we'll hold the rest of the questions till the end, if you want to.
Okay. So I'm just going to move forward with math, historical performance. And this is to look at the five-year trend from 2010 to 2014. We did see proficient come up a bit, but we also, also are dealing with the state averages varying from year to year. We didn't perform as well against the state for, for this grade, but, I'm sorry, for grade three, but we'll address this later in the presentation. Grade four is similar. We start to see more consistency from the state, which makes it a little bit easier for us. I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page here. We don't see consistency within the state, so that, again, it makes it very similar, similar to grade three, where we do have some inconsistencies that we need to deal with. Again, we'd like to see our proficient and advanced categories much higher. It's not until grade five that we begin to see more consistency with the state across how their averages are for each category. Our grade five is consistently at or above the state level in proficiency, but we're still pushing to get our students into advanced. Similar in grade six. Again, we see consistency from the state all five years. And for grade six, our data shows that the students are above average in all levels in proficiency. Again, we're going to push to get them into advanced. But we have to keep, keep in mind that this is the last grade for the elementary school. So this is a culmination of grades pre-K through six, and what we're seeing, all of that information, the content, the standards, all rolling up into this grade. In grade seven, this is our transition to the middle school. Although there's only a 1% gap between Abington and the state in the warning category, there's currently a 7% gap between the state and Abington in the advanced category. So we continue to reduce our students in the warning category. We're continuing to increase rigor and pace and try and move them more toward the advanced category. For grade eight, although Abington is 9% below the state in. For grade eight, although Abington is 9% below the state in the advanced categories, we have 3% fewer students in the warning category, and we need to, again, reduce our numbers in the needs improvement, so that it follows more along with the state averages, and get them more into the proficient and advanced categories. For grade 10, you'll see the trend is clearly different for both the state and for the Abington students. So in grade 10, the 2011 frameworks have not yet been completely transitioned into the MCAS assessment. This makes it a bit more familiar for the teachers, so that when the questions are released, they're more familiar with the questions. But now, what we're going to start to see this year is more of the 2011 standards-based curriculum in the MCAS test. For the cohort data, so cohort, let me just define that very quickly, is the same group of students moving from year to year. So if Johnny's in grade three, two years ago, he was in grade four last year, he's currently in grade five, so this is the same group of students. We are starting with grade four, because we don't have, obviously, grade three doesn't have a cohort yet, to compare data between years. What we see for this cohort in grade four is that warning went down, but needs improvement went up. Proficient and advanced are relatively the same for this cohort, between grades three and four. You can see the state average for this particular cohort fluctuates dramatically from year to year. For grade five, this is where we begin kind of seeing a stacking. If you take a look at 2014, you see the trend from warning, needs improvement, to proficient increases, and this is generally what we like to see, this is what follows the state. This cohort experienced more consistency in grades four and five from the state, so it makes it a little bit easier to follow. We didn't do that great in 2013 in needs improvement, but again, we're seeing the culmination of the efforts of the students and the teachers. Grade six, this cohort, again, with the exception of 2011, saw consistency between 2012 and through 2014 in the state data. Again, grades five and six show a trend toward higher proficiency, and less in the warning and needs improvement category. Again, this is a culmination of all the elementary school years that we're seeing at grade six. For grade seven, this is the first year that MCAS has completely reflected the 2011 frameworks. Our current materials are not reflective of the 2011 frameworks. So although we've spent a lot of time and money, and, not so much money, a lot of time, in matching the curriculum and materials, we might see this dip, because we just, we need to be able to get those resources in order to have them aligned with the curriculum. For grade eight, this cohort, starting in grade five, experienced more consistent state averages across the four years. MCAS began to reflect the changes in the frameworks in 2012, which were then complete in 2014, and you can see the consistency between, with the state from 2011 to 2014. For grade 10, I just want to point out, there's a gap right here. Grade nine is that non-tested MCAS year, so they have, the MCAS test every year except for grade nine, they skip a year, and then we have grade 10, hence the gap there. Two years ago, or last year, we talked about how well these students did as eighth graders, actually, it was two years ago. They continue to be strong and score well in the state, but this particular cohort has shown a lot of strengths within their school careers. Some cohorts just tend to be stronger than others.
So we'd like to switch over to the English Language Arts Historical Performance Data District versus the state, and even though I'm going to speak to you about secondary schools, Shari is going to continue with the elementary school.
Okay, so again, historical performance. Note that the state averages, which we didn't see in math, we do see in ELA, is that the state averages are fairly consistent from the get-go. Grade three generally mirrors the state averages. In 2014, we were below the state average in warnings, and the scores for grade three are fairly consistent. For grade four, again, we see consistency within the state. Grade four also mirrors very closely the state averages, although we're slightly below. In 2014, we were below the state in warnings again. For grade five, again, consistent state averages. Our five-year trend for grade five is consistent, so our proficient category is the highest for grade five, and we performed consistently at or above the state average in the proficient For grade six, again, state averages are fairly consistent in ELA. We have a five-year trend within the district that shows consistency in grade six. We are above the state average in proficiency in the last five years. Again, we're looking at the culmination of elementary school.
So when we look at grade seven, the most impressive statistic is, we went from 2013 with an advanced scoring population of only 7%, to an advanced scoring population of 40%. This also mirrors the state, but it's a significant amount of progress for both the state and Abington. What's especially significant about this is, this too is the first year that the 2011 frameworks incorporating the Common Core state standards are part of the curriculum. What's nice to see is, there is not an implementation dip. We're not regressing in order to be in line with the frameworks, we're keeping pace with them. When we take a look at the next slide in grade eight, we have an increase in proficient from 61% to 71%. We have a little less than the state in advanced, but we outnumber them in proficient. Our needs improvement score has also decreased from 15 to 9. So we see the steps on the bars on the left-hand side getting smaller, and the ones on the right-hand side getting larger, and that's the kind of movement we would like to see. For grade 10, we have an increase in advanced from 33% to 45%. The state only went from 40 to 41. So not only did we outpace the state, we made more growth than the state did. So we go to the cohort data, and I'm going to shift back to Shari, who's going to talk about the elementary cohort data.
Okay, grade four for the cohort. If you take a look at the state's data, it does not show a similar trend. We also see fluctuation in our grade four cohort data, where we had, proficient was higher in 2013 than in 2014. For our grade five, there's more consistency for this particular cohort through the years. Grade five does follow the same pattern as the state. We did perform better in proficient in 2014. We've seen the gains in proficiency and advanced, and drops in warnings and needs improvement. In grade six, again, very similar to the grade five data, we've got the consistency with the state. The cohort showed improvement from grades three all the way up through grade six. This particular cohort is improving from year to year, and, again, this past year in grade six, we're looking at them performing above the state average.
So when we look at the testing history of our grade seven class, which is the class of 2019, this class may be the first class to actually take the PARC assessments, if Massachusetts decides to adopt them. The move toward mastery, indicated by an increase in advanced and proficient, is really where we want to go, and to be quite honest, we want to be better than average. We want to offer all our students the opportunity for mastery. When we move to grade eight, we can see that the increase in advanced and proficient exceeds the state of Massachusetts. We're on par with them in terms of the advanced, but we have more students in proficient, and fewer in needs improvement, and that's exactly the profile we'd like to see. When we look at grade 10, it reminds you that we have no assessment at grade nine, but should PARC be adopted, we would have assessments not only in grade nine, we would have them also in grade 11, to keep students on track for college and career. What you can see here is that the increase in advanced and proficient exceeds the state's figures as well, and you can see something that sort of looks like a bell curve, all the way, when these students were in, let's see, that's grade 10, 9, 8, 7, 6. By the time we move from grade six to grade 10, more of our students are in advanced and proficient. And what I'd like to point out is, the warning and needs improvement do not account for 10 students. So when we have a class of about 100, fewer than 10% are not proficient. Our advanced and proficient number is 91% of our students in that category.
So the third piece of data that we're going to look at, that's somewhat new this year, is student growth percentile. And let me just define this for you. The MCAS results show an individual student how they're achieving relative to the standards, and I just want to point out the word achieving. Growth measures that particular individual student's performance over time, relative to their academic peers. And academic peers meaning students that perform similarly to them across the state. So you can have Johnny, who's performing very, very well, and Suzie, who might not be performing well, they're going to be compared to their particular academic peers to show growth. And I'll get into this a little bit more. So growth is very distinct from achievement. It looks at, like I was saying, it compares them to their statewide academic peers, not all the students in the state. So it somewhat levels the playing field. Growth is determined by subject, grade, and year. So when we look at growth, it is separate from achievement, so achievement is relative to the standards, and both of these together will give us performance. So the reason why we want to look at growth is, we want to measure how each student is progressing, no matter their performance over time. We want to see how that individual student is progressing. And why do we look at performance? Well, two things, we want to look at their achievement, and how they compare to the grade-level standards, and also growth, so how the students are changing from year to year, compared to their academic peers.
Are those same concepts used within other districts besides?
Yes, yes. So I'm going to give you a quick example here. This is just, this is not from our district, this is strictly an example, it goes back to 2006, 2007, 2008. So this student Gina scored 230 out of 280 in grade five, and, again, she scored 230 in grade six. If we look at all students that score similarly to her, to see how they did in ELA in grade seven, based on her historical academic peers, we'll see that some students will have dropped into the warning and needs improvement category, we'll see some that went up to advance. If you take a look at the orange triangle in the middle, the very middle, that's typical improvement, that's typical growth. So these are not projections, I just want to be clear about that, this would be real data, and how it's calculated by the state. So if we follow Gina from grades five to seven, and we look at grade eight, say she performs, again, at the 230 mark. If we look at that 230 mark, and we see that 65% of her academic peers performed better than her, she performed better than 35% of her academic peers, therefore, her student growth percentile, or SGP, would be 35, and this is all calculated through the state. All the colors in that particular graph coincide with, the different triangles coincide with different student growth percentiles. So if you take a look at the top triangle, the darker red one, that corresponds to students that have made growth in the 80th to 99th percent growth. And then, below that, they would make the 60th to 79th percent growth. Okay, does that make sense? So Gina was within the 20 to 39% growth. The average, or the typical, like I pointed out before, was that is the general orange, which is between 40 and 59%, is what we see in the typical student. So the purpose with the growth model is that, in a sense, Gina, Gina looks like she's not improving or declining, but however, she, it does actually show us that she's better than 35% of her academic peers, but didn't do as well as the other 65%. Okay, so this is a new statistic, very, very general overview of how that's calculated, and what that looks like. So if we take, this is just a sample, again, an example, this is not Abington. So we take a look, I want to point out a few things. At the bottom, we have the median. The median is used to prevent outliers into the calculation. So we have 50% of the students below, 50% above, so that's why the median is used. On the left-hand side, on the y-axis, we have the percent proficient or higher. So these are the kids that ranked in the proficient or advanced category. If you take a look, the x is the state average, and it's almost always at the 50, for your median growth percentile across the x-axis, and then across the y-axis, that can vary. The other thing I want to point out is, if you were to take this graph and break it into four quadrants, if you take a look at the upper quadrant, I don't know if you can read that too well, lower growth or higher achievement, so the students can perform really high against the standards, but they may not have shown a lot of growth. And this can happen when, say, the students have performed really high on the MCAS from year to year, say they're at 98%, there's not a lot of room to grow there. So that's where they might still show the high achievement and lower growth. In the bottom-left quadrant, lower growth, lower achievement. Bottom-right is higher growth, lower achievement, and the top-right is higher growth, higher achievement. Of course, that's where you want to be, that would be best in that quadrille. So for this particular example, the state was at 50, so the first number is your x-axis, and then at 54% for the proficiency, and the district was in the upper-right quadrant, higher growth, higher achievement. So this is the first year that we're looking at this. If we take a look at our elementary math student growth percentile relative to the state, the colors came out a little bit differently on the PowerPoint, but they're all labeled. So the x in the middle, you'll see grade four, it's right here, that's at your 50 mark, and our grade four was in the lower growth, lower achievement category. Our grade five was just barely in the higher growth, lower achievement, which is in the bottom-right quadrant by like, a point, and then grade six was found to be in the higher growth, higher achievement. For secondary math, student growth percentile, our grades seven and eight were within the lower growth, lower achievement categories, and our grade 10 was in the lower growth, higher achievement categories. For elementary school, ELA, student growth percentile, our grade four was just barely below the state average, slightly in the lower growth, lower achievement, and both grades five and six were in the higher growth, higher achievement category.
So for secondary school growth, we'll look at grade seven. Grade seven is in the higher achievement, lower growth, it's above the 50% mark, and it's closer to the center. They have a score of 37.5. Grade eight is in the higher growth, higher achievement quartile. You can see they're close to the center, and up to the upper right. Their score is 53%, so that is a better SGP than the state. The sort of mustard-colored, orange-colored mark is grade 10. Now, we're in the high achievement, we've got 92% advanced and proficient. The thing is, we've been hovering around 90, 92 for the last five years, and the growth in the last 10% is difficult to achieve, especially when there's a lot more decision-making on the student's part, about where their effort is going to go toward achievement. One of the things that I have a great concern about is, we accept 60 as a passing grade at Abington High School. To convince a student who just wants to pass to continue to grow and achieve is sometimes a very difficult argument. You can lead them to the buffet, but you can't make them sample everything. So the idea here is, it's good work to have that high achievement, but how do you get a high-achieving student to continue to push forward and grow even more, when they say, hey, I've got an A. What kind of A do you want me to get? So that's the idea. We need to continue to push those students, not to settle for what they have, but to continue to grow and move forward.
So here's where we get into some of the meat of this. So what are the possible causes for MCAS variation? Well, this isn't news, we've had budget reductions, we've had teacher layoffs. The issue with this is that we still are feeling the effects of it. So we- So we have students that were redistricted and transitioned multiple times within the district, and sometimes multiple times between buildings, especially at the elementary level. Our class sizes have increased, remedial supports have been reduced, and we're, we're very low with our resources in terms of curriculum and assessment. We also saw with the data, there were varying abilities among cohorts. We're just beginning, last year, we piloted new programs in math, and we looked at science inquiry lessons to add as well. And there have been changes to the state, actually, in, in all the curriculums. We're now just, you know, pushing forward, as we discussed with the, the previous slides with the data, Common Core State Standard Integration. We've got the new PARC test that we tested last year as a pilot. We've got the new science curriculum that's coming out. So there's a lot of, there are a lot of changes. We've got the technical components to the Common Core State Standards, and that's basically the students have to be able to read and write in each subject area. So that's going to take some training for teachers who are very content-specific, say in science or math, to help teach how do you write that for the, the PARC or the MCAS test.
So the science recommendations, Sherry is saying we are looking for that transition to the mass science frameworks. So we would like to continue to build our inquiry-based science curriculum and align them to the mass state frameworks. We, we started with FOSKIDs, Science KIDS, for K through five. We would like to support implementation of those kits. And something we really want to prioritize professional development for the new science curriculum as we make that transition. And the state is going to help with making that transition to the new frameworks. And once the new frameworks are in place, it usually takes about three years for the MCAS tests to catch up with them. So we'll continue to, in our fifth and eighth grade, science MCAS will continue to, the standards will be, for the old curriculum, as we kind of move towards the new curriculum. And for the, as I said, for the science one, for the biology one, we're, we're going to make that transition slowly as we catch up to the MCAS. And we are absolutely working on aligning our curriculum to the Common Core State Standards. Oh, sorry.
Okay, so we are, we are looking at updating our curriculum, but again, it's a moving target with what the state's going to do. But what we're doing right now is integrating that inquiry-based science, and we're updating the curriculum as we go, trying to enhance it. We are going to see as common an implementation dip any time you add a new program, something inquiry-based. There's, it takes a few years for it to strategically take a grasp and continue to move forward. For math, we're going to continue to prioritize the curriculum and the professional development. So this is the first year that we are putting in a new math program called Envisions. This was piloted last year along with Go Math at the elementary level, and we still had some teachers doing the everyday math. And a lot of districts are, are moving away from the everyday math and going toward the Envisions, which the teachers really liked. There's a great technology component and a lot of that technical Common Core State Standards piece to it. We're going to, again, ensure the alignment of the mass Common Core State Standards. So we have the country, the, the states that are partaking in Common Core State Standards, they're using that, but then Massachusetts is going to, has opted to change or add about 15% of those standards. So we're making sure that our curriculum is aligned with what Massachusetts wants to do. We're looking at reviewing and piloting the new math programs so that it segues from the elementary school. We have that vertical alignment into grades seven through 12. And that's going to include working with myself, the curriculum coordinators, and the math, math chair. So last year, 20% of our students, and this is, is kind of a side note, at the, at the high school level, did not take geometry by their sophomore year. So this year, they're doubling up so that they're going to be ready for the MCAS test. And this is because of the changes that the state has passed down with the Common Core State Standards. Especially in math, we've seen a lot of adjustments in the curriculum. So we're, we're looking to make up those gaps as we go. We have academic support is used to remediate math skills and promote problem-solving. After we get the November retest results, then we're going to be able to put tutors in place for math to help assist those students that need extra help in math. There's also the common planning time that we use pre-K through 12 that will assist, actually, in all subject areas.
So the ELA recommendations involve continuing to prioritize curriculum, align ELA instruction and materials K through six to updated ELA curriculum. This may mean more in-depth informational reading instruction in addition to literary instruction, and a different type of writing. Almost all the Common Core Massachusetts framework writing tasks involve text-dependent questions. So a student doesn't get a writing prompt unless they have read something first to inspire them and give them a model to go from. We need to establish a vertically-aligned writing curriculum with ELA department chair and curriculum coordinators to make sure we're starting at the correct standard and scaffolding students to success at every grade level. We need to adopt grade-appropriate, common writing rubrics. The PARC assessments have developed a new writing rubric, not only for writing argument and analysis, expository writing that is most similar to the long comp, but also students will be writing creatively and creating narratives in science, social studies, and literature. We need to restore remedial supports for students who struggle with literary and informational reading tasks. Very commonly, these writing resources in the forms of tutors, paraprofessionals, are most common at the elementary school. But we are finding that we have students who struggle at the middle school and the high school who are two or more years behind their grading level, their, their reading level per grade. So what we want to do is look at restoring remedial supports for reading on the secondary level.
General district recommendations. We're going to continue to use data analysis to inform instruction. We are at Level 3 status this year, and that's based on a, our subgroup's performance in math at the high school level. So currently, we're working with the state, with the, it's called the DSAC department, and also we're working as a subcommittee to look at these subgroups and to improve these scores. We're looking at bringing in sustained training from Teaching and Learning Institute, showing best practices for effective teaching and learning from Mike Shuckelford. Look at providing differentiated instruction for the higher-tiered students. We don't ever want to forget about these students, that we want to make sure that they're challenged, and again, we can move them from that proficient to advanced category. Continue to create systemic rather than reactionary changes. So this is where our new programs are coming in, looking at the curriculum, developing curriculum maps to make sure everybody is aligned pre-K through 12, everything is aligned to the Common Core State Standards, the new science standards. So everything that's been in flux with the state, we're making sure that we're keeping up with it. Be cognizant of implementation dips. Like I was saying before, it can take three to five years when you put in a new program for us to start seeing the benefits of that program. If you take a student that's in kindergarten right now, you might not see the benefits for a few years when they're tested in fifth grade. We also have students that are starting now in third grade with the new program and the new Common Core State Standards. So we're looking to make sure those students don't have gaps in the instruction or their curriculum, so that when they are being tested on the MCAS test or the future PARC test, that we catch those gaps. And right now, we're working, like we've been talking about, the science curriculum. So there, since the state doesn't really know what they're doing 100%, we still have the science inquiry curriculum in place, but there's really nothing out there at the moment. No companies that are saying we're Common Core aligned, like a lot of the math and the ELA does at this point. So is there anything you guys want to add? Okay. Comments and questions? Thank you.
I had a couple of questions. In regards to the science, fifth and eighth grade MCAS scores, are there particular sections within the, within the test itself that the students are having more trouble with, which is why we're seeing?
It varies every year because the fifth and eighth grade, the fifth and eighth grade test is the integrated test. So there's a little bit of life, physical, earth, and technology. So those questions, those open response questions, sometimes they'll do really good in tech, sometimes they'll do good in life. It really depends upon those questions that they're getting. And it's the same with the bio test. Anatomy, genetics, biochem, cell biology, sometimes they'll be like really great in, in one area, but not so great in another. And that will vary every year depending upon that one question that they're going to, that they're going to ask.
There, there's no consistency from what I've seen when I've analyzed the actual MCAS tests, how many questions they might ask in life sciences or earth-space science. And it does, it does fluctuate. I know in fifth grade, we tend to do better in physical science and the technology questions. The life science, earth-space science will need some work, but again, that's what's also in flux with the state.
Okay. I guess this has to do with math. If you look at the math cohort data, grade four in every cohort seems to have the poorest overall performance. And I'm just curious why, because grade three seems to be up here in every cohort, it drops in grade four every cohort, and then it goes back up again. Is there a reason why grade four seems to stick out in every single cohort?
That's something that we're actually looking at and looking at data analysis this year, to look, to drill down into what the standards are, take a look at the actual questions, and that's something that we're working on in our curriculum planning time with the grade four right now.
Okay, is that something that you can keep us updated on? I'd be, I'd be really curious as to why. If there's any specific areas as to why that's happening. Thank you.
Where do these charts come from? Is that, does the district have it, or did we get them from the state?
Those charts?
Yeah.
I actually created those to show the difference between the state average versus the district.
Okay. So, and the data is coming from the state?
From the state.
Okay.
Formerly called the Data Warehouse, it's now called Edwin Analytics, and I think it just got a new name last week. We take the actual numbers from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. We plug them in, but Sherry creates the Excel sheet that produces those.
Okay.
They're also very similar to the kinds of graphs that we would have gotten from TestWiz, which is another statistical package that we used before the state developed and made the current package available.
And I'm not sure, someone mentioned, on grade seven ELA district, you mentioned something about the framework. Can you just go back to that? I'm not sure what you, you talked about 2011.
Sure. So the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks were created in 2001, they were revised again in 2006. And then in 2011, the Massachusetts frameworks were revised again to incorporate the Common Core State Standards. And the Common Core State Standards require that students read work in a kind of staircase of complexity. So there's no elementary plateau, no middle plateau, no high school plateau, but every grade texts get more complex. So 2011 was the first year that the 2006 standards were completely set aside, and the 2011 standards were completely employed. What's really been hard for us in the middle school is during this transition, the state only releases half of the items and half of the readings. So we don't, we only know the standard, but we don't know the precise question or the passage that the students were assessed on. So that's, that's kind of hard. So when Sherry spoke about the implementation dip, the state of New York, all their scores went down dramatically when the schools adjusted to the new standards, because the former standards weren't as close to the Common Core State Standards, I think, as the Massachusetts ELA standards were. So even though the staircase of complexity increased, so the students are reading work that is longer, with longer sentences and more vocabulary, Massachusetts students, both at the state and in Abington, were on pace in ELA. We might have expected to see a dip because they're harder, but people could see this change coming for a couple of years, and they adjusted.
So have we, as, there's recommendations in here. Have we incorporated what we need in this year's budget to address these needs?
So if I could answer that, this data became available to us a month ago, month and a half ago. So what you'll be seeing in the budget presentations for the next year are going to be directly related to these things. Having said that, there are other data points that are used in the classroom, in the district, in standardized tests that were used for the development of this. So you've seen in this budget already in the current year, some things that were done, for example, the purchase of math textbooks. We knew we needed to do that. We needed those resources to match the curriculum. But for this information, this is, this information is about two months old. So it's not exactly specifically in this budget, to the extent possible, on what we could anticipate it is, but not based on this specific card data.
Okay.
Since I could respond to that on ELA, our textbook series is 2006, and it's 2014. The literature hasn't changed dramatically. So we're not trying to jump in line in this budget cycle to get new textbooks. But what we are looking to do is to increase our professional development, so we know how to handle those texts differently. And what you saw about the writing rubric and the writing curriculum alignment, that would be money in curriculum development in the time that people need to process and change the instruction, even though we're using the same texts. So you will see those requests in this year's budget cycle.
And when did we, the remedial support, when did that go away for the middle school and the high school?
Back during the budget cuts, there, there were, there were reductions. And since then, we have slowly tried to put some of those things back in place differently with a new eye on the data.
I would say, even at that time, I would remind you that all the department heads were deleted at that point in time to put all our resources in keeping the student-teacher classroom ratio as manageable as we could. And those were only added back in, in math and English to deal with processing the data for MCAS, and then they were gradually added back in. So that would be one example of curriculum writing being postponed. But we would look at reading instruction, paras, tutors, in academic support being taken away, and having those being added back. So students at risk have additional assistance during the school year, but we don't have as much as we need at this time that's subject-specific.
And maybe this is a question for Peter, but you know, when we look at the funding for the schools, is the issue just funding, or there are other issues within the district that need to be addressed? And the reason I ask that question is because you provided the audit report from the state, and there isn't anything in there about funding. It's about challenges that we have, and it was around, you know, curriculum and professional development. So that's where I'm trying to weigh what we have here versus what the state came in and did an audit. And some of the stuff, I've got to be honest with you, is a little eye-opening and a little troubling when you read it. So how do, how do I, as a school committee member, balance what I'm seeing here and then the possible causes with the state coming in, doing an audit, saying, okay, you're above net state funding? And this is a public document, but you have issues that you need to address that have, that what they, I don't see them putting a dollar figure on anything. So I'm just trying to understand how this all works. Because these are all public documents, so you, I'm just trying, as a school committee member, trying to weigh, it's like, because there's a document out there that's not saying we don't have enough money to educate our children. So what's, what's our response to that?
The answer is, we don't have enough money to educate our children. And the state auditor that provided that, or the state auditors, will not ever put that in a document that provides, the state provides half of the money to Abington to educate Abington children. And the net school spending, the foundation amount in Massachusetts is not adequate to fund education. And you, you know, you're on the budget and finance subcommittee, you know the challenges we have around special education and the cost of education and where those dollars are going. But they're never going to put that in an audit report.
Right, but I guess, I'm just trying to marry what we presented here with what the state came back in an audit report.
I could give a historical I could give a historical long view. This is my 19th year in Abington Public Schools. I started in the fall of 1996. And in 1993, we had the Ed Reform Act. So we put in the practice of inclusion, we got frameworks and the MCAS assessments happened. So as soon as we did that, we knew we needed a K-12 radical change in the way we taught writing. So we hired John Collins. We had professional development for every single person who delivered instruction in every single content area to teach focus correction areas and to get everybody writing in every content area. You can look at the impact of that professional development on the MCAS scores before we had it, when we got it, and afterwards. The thing is, the expectations for student writing have changed. So when the folks at the state come in and do an audit and they see we're using antiquated practices and we're not scoring writing in the same way, what they're saying is we all need to get on the same page. You need professional development to improve your instruction. But if we haven't been able to afford system-wide professional development, those changes are going to be behind. And we don't have the materials, the textbooks, the time for curriculum writing to get that done because again, the priority has been trying to reduce the student-teacher ratio so that more students can learn. So now what I think that audit tells us is now that times are getting better, you need to think about redistributing the budget and investing again in system-wide professional development so that everybody's on the same page. What they saw was an incredible variance in the practices, in instruction, in assessment. And what we need to do is, is get that lift again that we did when the 1993 Ed Reform happened. So there's not really a price tag that you can put on it. A lot of people have been very creative. A lot of teachers have gone to graduate school. A lot of students and, a lot of teachers read professionally and it's done spot by spot, classroom to classroom. But what we really need to see is, is a radical change toward common strategies. That's what I see in the audit. And you have to spend money on that, on the time for people to do the professional reading and training so they can write that curriculum. You need to get them the resources. And it has to be consistent K through 12, pre-K through 12, to really have an impact. So that, that's what they mean, I think, when they say, that they're not going to ever say spending. They're going to say you need to get the job done. But in order to get the job done, we're going to need to buy professional development and buy the time for people to create these things.
You use the term redistribution. What, what do you mean by redistribute? Are you saying take the money that we currently have and redistribute it in another way?
Well, if we're not going to get any more, we have to redistribute it. And the formula right now doesn't favor a town like Abington with the size of its.
So you're talking at the state level. You're not talking about us.
Our school budget is part of what the town of Abington provides and part of what the state of Massachusetts provides and part of what the federal government gets to us in other grants and programs. So the budget is, is a, has many streams of input to it. So until the formula changes to be more favorable to us with the, the nature of our district, we're going to do the best with what we have. And that's why I use the word redistribution. Because you have to consider what the priorities are, you have to be creative. I think one of the finest things that's happened is changing the high school schedule to have common planning time so during the school day, people can get together and start to do some of this curriculum work. That's a redistribution. There's nobody else coming in from outside, but we are getting time during the school day to begin this work. And that's a really fine investment. And that's something I would define as redistribution, if that makes sense. But I think when you talk about Mike Shackelford coming in for the full-day professional development, that's an expense. And if we want to enter into a long-term relationship with someone who can provide the same kind of training in instruction about writing that John Collins did toward instruction and assessment for all of us, then that's an investment. That's someone from outside whose expertise is in instruction and assessment, who is, is familiar with delivering system-wide change. So that's where I talk about, we need to add and make an investment that's beyond redistributing, redistributing. Forgive me slightly.
And I think that's the reason why we need all of this data that you presented today. We never seem to have enough money to do everything that we want to do for students. And we need to keep student achievement front and center in our focus when we're making our decisions, be it budget decisions, policy decisions. We need to keep student achievement front and center. And this data gives us a lot of information about where our students are and how they're performing. So that when we go to look at these things and make these decisions, we can take a look and say, well, on this level, this is where a problem is showing up in the testing that's taking place. And I was glad to hear someone say differentiate instructions for the advanced students. Because too many, too often I've heard, well, don't worry about them, they'll take care of themselves. And it's not true. We need to have challenges for our upper-level students as well. A lot of the data showed that we had a number of students in proficient, that were staying in proficient and not making that jump to advanced, which is a very difficult jump for kids to make.
And I would like to say at the high school, we've been able to support several advanced placement courses. But 11th grade is a long time to wait if you're a top-tier student for something to challenge you. And we need to see that growth in advance in elementary school and middle school so that we have more students who are at that level in high school. So we're very grateful for the support of those programs on the high school level, but we need to see them much further down.
It's a good thing we're building a new school where students have, well, carefully we'll have the opportunity to maybe make some of those changeovers if they're ready.
But the school doesn't, that's not going to necessarily improve the education.
What I'm saying is students will be able to take a, let's say you've got a middle school student that's performing at a higher math level, they'll be able to go over to the high school and take a class if they need, if it would be helpful to them.
Okay, you're talking geography.
Grade 18 is kind of a great divide, but what's really great when everybody's in the same campus, that high school teachers can go to the middle school, middle school more easily and students can go with their intellectual peers and their content area peers more easily. If they need a more advanced math or English, they don't really move from Washington Street over here to Glenoway. But if they're on the same campus, we might be able to make that happen with a redistribution of resources.
Also in terms of the technology, the opportunity for online learning, virtual learning, things like that will be enhanced for us.
So can you sum up in two or three bullets what I need to know from this presentation as a school committee member? I mean, there's a lot of data here. It's like, but what, what, what do I need? Because the charts, I'm not going to remember going away. But it's like, what do you, as a school committee member, what do I need to hold on to make sure the district gets what, at least we try to challenge and get what we need? If this, if you say, because you can't do everything. So if there were three things that you're like, hey, listen, I need you as school committee members to do this. Would fight for that.
Yep. And I think that's a great question. I would say, I'll take the elementary school. I think it's, it's pretty ubiquitous, ubiquitous throughout. But I would say updating our resources, materials and curriculum to vertically align pre-K through 12, but also keep up with the state. Make sure we have student engagement so the kids are engaged, the higher tiered students are engaged so that they meet the needs.
Okay.
Because we have these new, more challenging standards, what we need to do is to have the time to look at what we're doing now, see how it correlates to the curriculum. We need to have professional development in instructional techniques and assessment practices so that we scaffold all students to standards-based success. So investment in the Shackelford teaching, learning and assessment professional development, pre-K through 12 is top priority. The next thing we need to do is have the tools to do that job for every student. So that means supporting not only textbooks and technology that allows us to execute these things and practice these skills because we are going to see online assessment, whether we go with PARK or something else. So those 21st century digital skills are paramount. So of course, we're already investing in the mathematics textbooks. We need to see the same materials in science and we need to see them in English Language Arts eventually.
Yeah, to that point on the Michael Shackelford, I mean, that was outstanding. I mean, and you really felt it in the room. Everybody was, I think, like, they were happy to be there because they got a lot out of it.
And the thing is, Michael Shackelford rarely comes in for a one-day hit-and-run professional development. What he really wants to do is be a change agent and work with the district for multiple years. And that's why I put it first on my list. You've got to change the hearts and minds of the people who are in the classroom towards standards-based assessment before you start buying the tools. Because the tools alone can grow dust. But if you can put a person who's kind of had that conversion experience towards standards-based assessment in a room, that's the priority. That's what's going to change student performance.
And you can see, I mean, it was, people were engaged there.
Absolutely.
I mean, everybody was, I mean, because some of the stuff was sort of like, wow, that's, that's a great idea. The, starting with the Y rather than the Y. I mean, it's, I mean, I've actually talked to people at work about that because it's like, it changes your whole mindset.
But the thing is, we haven't made wholesale outside the district for every single educator professional development in almost 15 years. 15 years. We've been doing homegrown professional development from leaders within the community, including the administrators sitting at this table, did professional development on whole day. So the idea of having someone whose expertise is in that field, that's just crucial. And I couldn't say enough that that really needs to be in the budget because that's going to be the biggest bang for your buck.
Right, because he even said, and it's, it's common sense, it would make sense, is you can't have this just once. Because.
And for example, your very good question, Paul, about money and that recommendation from the state, there's another thing in the state that talks about professional development in that report from the state. And yet the state is responsible for the last couple of years driving our professional development around the new teacher evaluation tool, the data-driven instruction that goes on in the classroom. And I'm not, in the classroom, I'm not saying those weren't good things, those aren't good things for us to do. But those were state-required things that we needed to implement, we needed to implement in the district. And yet, the state in that report said you'd need to do some of what we're talking about here. But where our hands have been tied by the state, they're the ones that prevented us from doing these things.
Well, the other thing is, I used to sit on the Professional Development Council. And we had representation from content areas in every school in the district. And after the collapse of the schools, after the decrease in the faculty, we couldn't really, I think, afford the substitutes to get the teachers out of the classroom to sit on that council. So the people at the Curriculum Planning Council are the Professional Development Council. It would be nice to restore a body of teachers who have a say in the professional development. And I looked at that and I said, you know, it was here. It was here, but we made choices and the choices favored teachers in the classroom over that body, of those kids being in front of subs that were hard-pressed to be afforded.
We're bringing things back, not just because we did them before the same way. We're bringing things back differently. And in terms of bringing that body back, that's something we want to do. But because the state has been mandating the professional development to date, there isn't a reason to ask people, hey, what do you want to do? When the state's been telling us what we need to do. We haven't had the choice. If that makes any sense.
Can I just ask one last question? And just bear with me and I appreciate you taking the time. When you got into education, did you ever think you'd be doing this?
No.
Is it making education better?
I'll tell you what. When I saw MCAS coming down the pike, I thought, we're not ready for this. But you know what? It was a lever for equity for all students. It meant every student, regardless of their ability, had the opportunity to receive instruction at a grade level. We had four or five levels of English Language Arts and the kids in the lowest level were carrying around in the high school fourth-grade textbooks. And when MCAS didn't come in levels and it said, all students are entitled to this instruction, we delivered that to all students. So yes, I think more people are invited to the table. More people are graduating from high school in Abington than they ever have before. It's rare now that I hear somebody say, I'm the first kid in my high school to graduate, the first kid in my family to graduate from high school. So even though it appears to be a burden and I really don't like numbers and stats and bar graphs any more than I think the next person, it makes a difference in the life of kids. And I've been in this district long enough to see that, that kids who are sort of separate from the school population are getting a real meaningful education. And even though this next round looks scary, I know this means every kid is going to grow. So long and short, not really, but it has a payoff that's meaningful for the entire community.
Thank you.
I think everybody would agree we are over-testing kids though. And that there are, there are positives and negatives. Overall, the positives have been good. It's raised the level of, of learning, but we're over-testing our kids.
We'd like to do it more efficiently with fewer assessments.
Sorry, that was my.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we're moving on to, on our agenda unfinished business. First one is the proposed Abington Public Schools fingerprinting policy. In each of your packets, and actually it's for both of these two policies here, you have three items that go with each of the policies. For the first one, it's BC version one, version two, and then additional version two. The version twos are Paul's drafts and edits. One of them is a more cleaned-up version of that. And the Policy Review Subcommittee has gone through these policies. And I'm going to speak on the first one, the fingerprinting. And Policy Review Subcommittee is recommending for background check, version two, which is Mr. Hagerty's version. He put a lot of time into that and that's the one we're recommending.
And it was reviewed by council?
It was, yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I have no questions. I've gone through it over and over. I have no questions on this.
Anybody else?
Is this, can I just, is this, how much of a burden is this? I know it's, it's.
Good question. It's more of a burden on the individuals who are getting fingerprinted. And so it's a one, it's a, it's a one-time burden on them. Because we're already, with regard to Corey, we're required through the Corey process to be, to actually, to read materials, take a test, make sure we understand the process, provide security for it, integrity for the process, provide information to people who are not deemed suitable for work in Abington. So it's really on the people getting fingerprinted, on all the, all the people getting fingerprinted.
Okay, no more discussion. So we'd be looking for a motion to accept this.
I'll make the motion to accept the edits done on version two.
Second?
On favor? And then Kathy's going to speak on B.
Okay, B is the, we again have three versions that you have in front of you. One is the original, as it came from the state. We have the version with Paul's edits on it and then the cleaned-up version with Paul's edits. I believe we've reviewed this in the Subcommittee three times and it has been taken to the attorney. The attorney feels that there are some inconsistencies in the edited version or, I don't know if inconsistency is quite the correct word. Wording that might not be specific enough to hold up. So we reviewed both copies and Paul has done an amazing amount of work and I can't imagine the amount of time it took him to do it. However, in, to be safe and to have a policy that will be very clear and meet all of the requirements of the law, and both of these policies we're looking at are required by the law, we are going to recommend a vote on the original version.
I have no comments. I'll make a motion to...
Well, can I just say something before you do that? If you approve this, the version that was originally submitted, you'll be going against the law, because there's a section in here, on the next-to-last page, and it says, "Upon expulsion of such student, no school or district shall be required to provide educational service to the student," and it's not even a sentence, "student shall also receive written notification." That is, that's wrong. In the version I have, with counsel, I sat with him for four hours one day, to go over these two policies. He agreed, that's wrong, and that's got to come out. So, that's my problem with this document, is, we're willing to accept something that has something that is glaringly wrong. And I would like to know what the inconsistencies, I spent time with counsel on this version. So, if you want to approve that, then make a motion. But I'm telling you, that is wrong.
But...
And if that's wrong, there's other things in here that are wrong also, so...
But based on conversations with the same counsel, he's recommending that to keep in line with the rest of the state, that we align with their policy. And I know what you're going to say, Paul, because it's wrong, we shouldn't just do what they're doing. But he feels that it creates us less exposure.
Where are the inconsistencies? Where are the variances? I mean, I don't see, so let me ask you, where's counsel's version, then? So, let me, so what you're saying, then, let me see if I understand this. Counsel is recommending a policy that is legally wrong. I don't think that's what Joe Emerson wanted from the school committee. Because if you look at this, it says, and I will read it again, "Upon expulsion of such student, no school or district shall be required to provide educational services." That's what this was again, was trying to get away from, is you have to provide educational service. And then it's not even a sentence. It's not even a sentence.
So, I was not present for that meeting, and, you know, Phil, it's my job to weigh in, and do my job here. The, perhaps, and I don't know, because that's under 37 each and a half, and that is different than the Chapter 222, that's not, I don't feel comfortable enough with that being the reason for this disparity. Grammatically, I can't say that's a sentence, but I can say that that would be a question that I could research for the committee, but because I wasn't a part, I wasn't there at that meeting, I couldn't, I don't feel comfortable commenting on it. The only possible explanation, and again, I don't know, because I wasn't at that meeting, and I don't have counsel to ask them here tonight, is that that may be with regard to 37 each and a half, which has to do with the expulsion of students from a school district, which we would not be required to provide the additional services to, unless they were on an educational plan. Chapter 222 does not address expulsion. Chapter 222 addresses suspension. I don't feel confident enough in that explanation, because I haven't asked that question directly. That's my, those are assumptions I'm making, not anticipating that being on the table tonight.
And the problem that I had with the edited version was the fact that, although I don't think it was your intention, Paul, it reads that it basically takes the Assistant Principal out of the suspension process, the wording the way it is right now, and I don't think that was your intention. That's the way it comes across, comes across to me. And I really could not support a policy that didn't give the Assistant Principal a strong role in that.
No, it's footnoted there. The only reason I took it out was because it just keeps repeating itself, so to clean up the document. On page 2, there's reference, "The use of the term 'principal' in this document, where reference was also include the principal's designee." I didn't eliminate anybody. I didn't, and that's why, when you went through this, when I went through it with Joe, I mean, some of it is just geography, just cleaning it up, making it easier to read. But I did not. It's even on the parent. I took parent or guardian, I said, "The use of the term 'parent' in this document, where reference, will also include parents or legal guardians." I didn't eliminate anything. I mean, the only thing that I may have done was that, when we get, anything that goes to the superintendent, the superintendent doesn't, can't designate anybody else. I think if we're at this point, it's like, the superintendent needs to address it. I mean, the principal or designee. But the superintendent, when it gets to that sort of level, I want, my feeling is, I want the superintendent to be responsible for it.
Well, this is, we wouldn't even be discussing 222 if it weren't for the fact that it's a law that was produced by the state. It was made in the legislature. It was, the policy as we were given was vetted by DESI, then by MASCE. And anytime we make any changes to this, it does have to go back to the lawyer, which is a very expensive process. And I really don't want to send these policies back to the lawyer again. And Joe Emerson, and the message that we received, and we were not at your meeting with him either, felt that there were some ambiguities here.
Right, but what are they?
They could leave us open.
But what are they, though?
My particular concern was, I don't feel that there's clarity around the process in which the Assistant Principal is used in this process. That's my problem with it.
But all it is, is a reference. I didn't, all I said was, to clean up the document, so you don't, so you don't repeat Assistant Principal 50 times. I said, put it in a reference, it just cleans it up. The same thing with legal guardians. It's like, when I talk about a parent, I'm not excluding legal guardian, but it's like, to keep repeating the same thing, it's like, this thing just, I mean, these are hard reads anyways, but to just try and clean it up. But I'm a little troubled that I sat with the attorney to go over two policies for four hours one day, and it comes back that there's some inconsistency. When was somebody going to tell me? What kind of, I didn't know that. I thought, I thought at least it would be discussed, so we come to a meeting, and nobody tells me anything. These are the differences that Joe has with you, but nobody can tell me what they are. And then you want to approve of, have at it. Have at it. But I'm telling you right now, you're proving, you're approving a policy that is legally wrong. And it's not even a sentence. Bring it to a junior English class, and I've said this before, they'll say, "Try again. Get the sentence right." But hey, if that's what we want to accept, you know, take care of the pennies, the dollars take care of themselves. So, I just, I'm just floored that I, you put all this work into it, and then you come to a meeting, say, well, there's inconsistencies. Well, where are they? Nobody told me.
We hear what you're saying, Paul, and we appreciate all the time that you've put into it. We weren't at the meeting that you had, one-on-one with Joe. What he's recommending is that to keep in line with what the state's recommending, we go with this.
Yep, go along to get along. Let's do whatever the state says. I'm sorry, but that has to stop.
Excuse me, excuse me.
It has to stop. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but this idea that it's like, this is what the state wants, the state put out a document that's legally wrong, and we want to accept it? What's the purpose of us here, if we're willing to accept that? That's just wrong. I'm sorry. It's not why I came on the school committee, to just rubber stamp things and let it go flying through there. It's legally wrong. The attorney told me it was wrong. If you look at my version, it's not in there. Why is it out of there? Because that version I gave Joe, is he said to take it out. Now, we want to have a Subcommittee that says, yeah, let's approve this? Come on. Fine, make a motion. We'll get my support, that's for sure, something that's legally wrong. I want it in the minutes, though. I want it in the minutes, that Paul Hagerty stated that this, and I will even, let me even give you, let me submit this, I want this part of the minutes highlighting my comment to Joe Emerson. And he even agreed that that is wrong. Because it's not in there. If you look at my version, it is not in there. I don't know what we're doing here, then, if we're willing to accept something like that. And I guarantee you, that's not, if you had Joe Emerson here, he would not say to approve this. Because last time, it came up, and I probably need to apologize, publicly apologize to Joe Emerson, for saying, hey, listen, he didn't do this, we should call him on the carpet. But he only does what we ask him to do.
I don't agree with that, Paul, because he recommended, and he was comfortable with your edits on the background check policy. He's gone through both of them with us.
But why didn't we take what he was okay with on this one, and you identified to me what the inconsistencies are?
He felt more comfortable, he said he was comfortable with your edits, your recommendations on the fingerprinting policy. However, on the second policy, the 222, he felt that it opened us up to too much exposure.
But where? Where did it open us up to exposure?
He didn't point them out.
Because I met with him, he didn't, there were certain things, I knew, he wasn't, he was like, well, I don't know about that. But it wasn't to say, no, this document is, you shouldn't use any of it. But hey, I'm just, I'm just doing my job here, and it's, I'm just pointing out to you, if you approve this, there's a section in there that is legally wrong.
But that's your opinion.
It's not my opinion, that's Joe's opinion. He told me. And it's not even a sentence. So we want to have a policy, I mean, what message does that send to people? That the school committee is willing to submit a policy they know is grammatically incorrect? You know it, and you're still willing to approve it. What message does that send to people?
We are willing to approve a policy to create, cover us in terms of legal process. A policy that was created by the state legislature, and was approved by DESI, and was approved by the legal team at MASCE. And I feel that that covers us better than taking any chances with changing the wording. Down the road, if we need to review the policy again, because we find out that there's something wrong with it, well, so will every other school system in the state. So will DESI, so will MASCE.
No, there's, no...
And they don't have to do that for the other policy.
No, there's other states, the other districts that have been bold and tried to do this a little bit differently. But we want to just go along to get along, and get what you get. But I don't want any part of it. We'll get my support for something like that.
Okay.
Just think it sends a wrong message.
Well, we have two policies before us. We can take a motion on Paul's policy, we can take a motion on the original state policy.
Do we have a copy of the law itself?
I don't have that with me this evening. I could bring, apologies, I don't have with me. It was not a part of, you know, some of the conversations between counsel and this policy.
It's just going forward, who's supposed to be part of the conversations with the lawyer?
Coming up in the next section, I believe, is the Governance, he addresses some of that. To date, we do not have a policy on who contacts the attorney.
I didn't, I went through Ellen, I went through the chair. I didn't go talk to Joe on my own. It was approved beforehand. So it wasn't like I met with Joe on my own, and nobody knew about it.
And if that was implied, then I don't think it was meant to be.
Oh, no, no, I didn't, no, I just went, no, I don't, absolutely, I wasn't thinking anybody, no.
Yep, no, and I know, and we, you know, we agreed that you could meet with them, go through your edits, but...
And my only possible explanation to Paul's concern about the legality of the policy is that it's, this section falls under 37 each and a half, which has to do with the expulsion of a student, where we wouldn't have to provide educational service. But I don't know that, because I, I didn't, I want to ask the attorney to double-check it, to go beyond what I am supposing to be certain. Not that I don't believe that the committee members are saying.
Can the counsel advise the entire school committee as to what he thinks?
You could request that he puts his feelings about his opinion in writing. As Paul said earlier, the attorney asks, answers the questions you ask. He didn't say that specifically, I think Paul said something like, the attorney does what you ask him to do, or is asked. You could, as a committee, request that he put an opinion in writing.
I hate to say this, because we've been looking at this policy since August, and we need to have it in effect. But I suggest where there is a question of the legality on that one point, that we ask Joe Emerson for his opinion on that in writing, and that we table this document again.
Someone would just need to make that motion.
You'd make a motion?
Can we make a motion to accept the first policy, but with, waiting on the counsel's review of that specific paragraph?
You, I will be bringing that review back to you at your next meeting, which would mean that the policy would delay till then, anyway. So, I mean, the answer is, the committee can do what the committee wants. In terms of being practical about it, I would think that the policy, even, so you delay the policy until you get that letter, it would have the same effect as not deciding on the policy until the next meeting, anyway. They both would delay that. And just so that people watching at home know, we are following the law in the Abbottian Public Schools in the absence of a policy. I don't want people to think that student discipline isn't taking place at the Abbottian Public Schools.
I have no problems with Version 1 of the policy. I think the only thing I'd like to see is just the written consent from Joe on that one particular item, under Felony Complaint or Conviction, Section B. I believe that's what we're looking at. Or maybe not. I'm sorry, no, it's the wrong one.
Felony Complaint A.
Felony Complaint A.
So if someone makes a motion, and then that motion is then carried, then I know what the committee would like to do, you know, specifically.
I guess in some of the ones, I'd like to make a motion to get written clarification from counsel on felony complaint or conviction in Version 1 of this document, Part A.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
No.
So, will you follow up with Joe?
I will.
Okay. Next, under the report of Subcommittee, we have the School Committee Governance Subcommittee, which is Paul and Kathy. which is Paul and Kathy.
Everyone got a copy of the Governance and Operations section of the policy? And it was posted for public comment for approximately three weeks. No comments were received.
Can I just, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I was just going to give the numbers and I know I had them here because Teresa got me those. Just to give a little background of how, how much this went out. So it was sent out via constant contact. There were 2,467 recipients via constant contact. Of that, 2,400, 878 hits, which mean people actually clicked on it. And then of that 878, 114 recipients actually clicked and opened the PDF. So, kind of interesting to see. And there were no, I received no responses on it via email or anything else. I just wanted to make sure that people could see how far it got out there. Sorry, Kathy.
All right, that's all right. I was just wondering if anyone had any comments, questions, suggestions on anything within the policy.
I guess the only thing I had, and I just picked it up last night, is on page 14 and 16, is there any reason why the 48 hours instead of maybe 96 hours? In other words, like the minutes would be, wouldn't have to be out until Sunday night at seven, which is 48 hours before a turn thing, not being at seven.
It's required by law.
Oh, is it required by law?
Yeah. Yeah, it has to be 48 hours.
And then in your packet, you've got with that the two different versions of the remote participation. One includes executive session for remote participation and the second one does not include remote participation.
Which we had these from our last meeting.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, they're identical policies except for.
Executive session, right?
Yeah.
Yep. There was no further discussion, we'd be making a motion to approve this with all the policies.
You just want to designate which.
The remote participation should be part of it.
Part of it.
So we'd have to decide which of the two we wanted.
To include in the vote.
How difficult is, how difficult is it in these other conferences room to remotely participate versus this particular conference room? Is everything, is all the other conference rooms here set to be able to do that?
I think we'd have to bring equipment in, no matter what we did.
Yeah.
Either way.
And the other thing with the executive session, I get the concern about, you don't know who else is on the other end. Like, I could be sitting at home and I could have all my neighbors sitting there too. So that's, that's the only reason I have a little concern about allowing in an executive session.
Yeah, I have a problem with that also in terms of executive session.
Good point.
I think I as well have a problem.
So I would suggest that we use the remote participation that does not include executive session as part of the Governance and Operations document.
So we're going to have two motions, one on this and then one on everything else?
Yeah, we should, we should have a, one motion on the choice of remote participation document and then a separate vote on the whole packet.
So it's.
All right, I guess I'll make a motion to accept the remote participation document that does not include the executive session, which is number six.
And I'll second that.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm going to make a motion to accept the Abington School Committee Policy Manual of Governance and Operations as is.
I'll second that.
Aye.
So, if I could, just as I had publicly thanked Sean Riley for working on the sign and helping Abington with that, I want to thank the committee members for their work on these to date, whether it's the school governance policies or the previous policy work that was done. Ellen and Kathy and Paul have done quite a bit of work, so thank you. Lot more to do.
That said, we have the update from the School Committee Policy Review, which is myself and Kathy. Had a few meetings now. I think Kathy's going to speak.
Yes, while Peter and I were at the conference in Hyannis, we talked to Jim Hardy from MASC and actually Peter emailed Mike Gilbert. When we had talked about reviewing the, all the policies of the school committee, we said that MASC had a policy review component that we felt was too expensive to even consider. Now that we have waded our way through the governance section and the last two policies that we just talked about, we're finding out that perhaps MASC's governance service is not quite as expensive as we thought. The $10,500 that we quoted as a price for having MASC do this is actually over three years. So it would be about $3,500 a year. What they do is they come in, they meet with the Governance Subcommittee and with any of the groups that are involved in it. They review the whole, all of the policies of the school system and help you create the policies that you need and create them so that they fit the needs of your particular school system. And what makes this actually a reasonable cost in terms of the school system is that we've already spent that much in legal fees, almost that much in legal fees, just reviewing the small sections that we've done so far. So, and by contracting with MASC to work with us to do it, we have the services of their legal department. So we would not be incurring all of the costs that we are incurring every time we have to go to counsel to review a section or a policy. We would also have the services of people who are professionals at putting this together. And yet, we're not just, we would not just be accepting a boilerplate, we would be working with them. So it's not that we're looking to save us time, but looking to get a good product that meets the needs of our system without creating a financial situation that might be difficult for us.
How accurate is that, eight meetings at two hours? Just out of, I mean, was that his professional ballpark estimate?
Right.
So this is an email from Mike Gilbert, because I emailed him the question separate from Jim Hardy, who was the MASC representative who answered the question. And Jim Hardy would be the person who would come out to Abington to work with the Subcommittee before it comes to the full committee for a vote. And so this is what Mike put together. I mean, I have not done this with MASC before, I mean, previous committees have never wanted to do this work with MASC. So I'd have to, I'd have to take him at his word and the way he describes it, in his experience.
So this almost can be considered like a professional development for the school committee, similar to the professional development that the teachers and the administrators would get from some outside source.
I mean, I think anytime you're reading policy and talking about policy, it is, because then you think about how it's going to apply to a system and how the system works, it absolutely is a professional development, even if you're just reading it in the absence of someone who's gone from district to district.
Is it possible to bring him in, to talk with him, or is it a cost? Obviously, probably be a cost.
He said he would come, and Jim Hardy said he would come to a school committee meeting and talk about this if people wished.
He'd come to a full, full meeting, yeah, and do a, answer questions.
Right. Again, that was Jim, and this is an email from Mike, so Jim was the person who said that to Kathy and I at the MASC meeting.
I think I'd almost like to at least hear what, what they would have to say. I'd just be open to see what they have to say and see what type of services they can provide. I, that's my opinion.
So we try to see if they could come to one of our next meetings?
Absolutely, yeah.
And we can spread the cost over three years.
Three years.
I mean, it seemed like it would not be cost effective when we thought that that was a, you know, one-year fee. But when you spread it out over three years, it definitely makes it more cost effective.
And I caused that misconception because when I've asked them before what's it cost, they've said $10,000. I wasn't aware that it was over three years. So just to be open about that.
Yeah, I think it'd be great having him come in and just explain the process and what value they're going to provide to us. Yeah, I mean, because some of these sections, there's not a whole lot to them, but then you get into students and then instruction and it's like, forget it, I mean, it's brutal. I mean, even, I mean, I went back and looked at it, it's like, I think last month they said there's 303 policies out there. Well, I'm up to 359 now. And some of them we may not need, but it's like, it's just, this thing just keeps expanding and it gets bigger and it's like, to have some come in? Absolutely.
One thing I also asked him when I was there, I said, when I look at your sample online, there are all of these sections, and I said, are those all required? And he said, no, some of them are in there because they're required by law, some of them are in there because it was picked up in an audit that the system needed it, and others are in there just because school systems wanted them.
Right.
So it's not that everything listed there is something that we need to have.
Yes.
But it would be good to have the expertise of people who do this, who know this stuff, who are professionals.
The one thing that would be interesting to see though is when the Governance and Operations piece, because when we provided to Joe, he made some changes to the legal references to see if MASC, they're watching this, tip of my hand, if AMSC keeps theirs up to date. Because Joe did catch a couple of legal references that were wrong.
Some statutes were cited.
Yeah.
That were different than what the policy addressed.
Yeah. And if we can save money on the legal fees, please, absolutely, it's a great report.
So does, is there, is, I mean, I'm just again looking for the committee to provide the direction. Are you looking to hold this decision until after you hear from Jim Hardy, or are you looking to make this decision tonight and bring Jim Hardy in regardless?
Because the earliest we could have him in would be, if his schedule allows, it'd be sometime in January.
I mean, I don't want to continue on going into the policies we've got now and going into changing them and going into meeting with Joe Emerson and spending all that money if we're then going to have them come in and look at it and get it done, you know.
Because we'd have to hope that he had the evening available that.
Yeah.
He was scheduled for school committee also. I can't promise you he has that available.
I mean, after talking to him, I feel comfortable proposing that we make arrangements to follow this process, but I know the rest of you have not had that opportunity.
I mean, I think it's a good idea to have him in and help us go forward, so I think a motion should be made to have, for the, Mike Gilbert and.
Jim Hardy?
Jim Hardy come in as my professional direction. I don't know how you want to word the motion, as my professional direction.
So are you making a motion that we contract the services of MASC to provide this service with regard to policy?
Yes.
And that would be for this school, yeah?
As soon as they would be ready to.
So do we have, so if it was $3,500, do we have that in budget to allocate?
Out of the legal fees that are spent on.
Okay, that's, I, absolutely.
I'll second that.
So, I'm sorry, who made the motion?
That's a great report. Thank you.
Still going to try to get them to.
We're still going to try to get them to come in to talk about the process, though.
Yep.
So, yes, we have Business and Finance Subcommittee, which is Mike and Paul.
Well, we met once about a week or so ago and really just sort of, really did a 50,000-foot look at what was going on, reviewed last year's budget, and it's really about where we stand right now. I think we're going to meet again in two weeks.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
And get into a little more detail into how we're going to proceed for the 2015, 2016 fiscal year. Paul, you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, no, I think that, I did, I forgot, I did work on that spreadsheet, so I do, I have it done. And I tried tying it back to the allocation percentages, so I just want to proof it to make sure everything ties out, so if you had to, it's, you know, it's trying to lay everything out, so you take 17 pages down to basically 38, 11 by 17. So, you know, hopefully it'll make the budget process a little bit easier, because when you start putting the schools next together with the central administration, you look at the numbers, it's, you know, and especially when you, you know, how many students we service for the dollars that we're spending, and we do a pretty darn good job in this town, you know, considering the funding that we have and trying to work the numbers, I mean, I mean, the textbooks.
Costs money.
Yeah, it does, it costs money and we just, so I should have that to Felicia soon. I just, I just want to just double check it to make sure. I had actually put a formula and I had it going the wrong way. I'm like, how come this isn't tying out? So those, I just want to do my proofing on that, but hopefully.
Can you just, can you just even, just send it to me just so I can look at it this weekend?
Oh, yeah, I'll send it to, I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Yeah, without plugging stuff in, just so I can see, because it's written out a little.
I did it based on last year's numbers.
Right.
Yeah.
So while you're having turkey and stuff.
And working on next year's budget this weekend.
Are you in tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, nothing to make a motion on. And then the Special Education Parent Advisory Council Subcommittee, which is Paul with.
We met on, was it November 6?
Yep.
Yeah, we had, I thought it was a very good meeting. Discussed sort of the process of the CPAC and bylaws are in place. There was nomination, which is still out there, and we got two nomination, two individual staff voting nomination, waiting on a third, I think potentially there's a third for a secretary. But I thought it was a very productive meeting. And do you want to touch on the outreach to the individuals? Because you've.
Sure. Basically, we did receive two, and so I actually spoke to, we played phone tag for a little while, and then I spoke to the person that's interested in the chair position, and it's a husband and wife that are actually interested, so I spoke to one, and then he was going to relay that to his wife. And basically, just going, I sent them the bylaws, going over the bylaws, but also letting them know that, you know, once voted in, there could be changes made to the bylaws. So we talked about that, they actually informed me that there is. They actually informed me that there is a third person that's interested in the secretarial position, but would ask that we hold off till mid-December before we put ballot voting out to the public, just because of some personal things going on. So it went well, we'll see what happens. And I actually, you know, spoke to the individual and shared, you know, anything that they need. They're welcome to. And then there's also the Federation of Children, that's also helpful in providing services. So there's a lot out there, as long as we have, you know, committed people that want to take on the CPAC.
And I think that as you've got committed people that understand, you know, what it is and what it isn't. And so I feel confident that this, you know, we can get this thing going again.
Great, thank you.
So next we have Report of Superintendent of Schools.
We requested at the last meeting to provide a chart, an under-personnel administration informational. That chart has been provided because oftentimes you see a domino effect when someone retires or someone goes out on a leave. Someone fills that position from a current, from another position in the district, so you end up moving people around. Or even if someone transfers from one building to another building, or in, in one of these replacements, then you see even more dominos. And it can create the perception that there's been this hiring frenzy in the Abington Public Schools. So this information is reflective, even though you see nine different personnel moves in this section, this is reflective of the addition of one full-time equivalency of a paraprofessional to meet the needs of a student who requires services in Abington and didn't and could not have anticipated that this child would be on our doorstep and need this help. So that's to be compliant with their educational plan and provide them the services they need. So I've accepted the resignation of Ann Beaton as an English teacher in the Abington Public Schools for, as of August of 2015. Accepted the resignation of Betty Henderson as a paraprofessional through the purpose of retirement at the end of the 15, 16 school year. Approved the appointment of Ashley Craig as a preschool teacher effective November 12. This is one of those dominos, we had someone retire, and then the dominos moved. Approved the appointment of Victoria Lynch as a paraprofessional. Approved the appointment of Heather Ward as a paraprofessional. Granted Stephanie Clark a parental leave of absence. Granted Megan Eddy a parental leave of absence. Granted Karen Shiplett a parental leave of absence. And approved the appointments for the following after-school: MCAS tutors, Tammy Reed, Laura Story, Elizabeth Clautier, Yana Hickey, Shannon Duquette, and Catherine, and Catherine N'Jalas.
Do I, can I just send the after-school MCAS, so other districts offer that?
Yes.
Okay. Is it a requirement or...
It's not. It's part of what we talked about in terms of providing remediation. They focus their efforts on students that are in those warning and needs improvement categories.
What tremendous value in this. It's, it's great. It's too bad we couldn't add a couple more.
Under other matters, I don't know if you want me to continue. Under the park testing area, I don't have anything for you this evening. And then your...
Then, this was something we talked about possibly doing at our last meeting, community outreach. And Teresa was able to get in touch with the library. And the room is available Tuesday, March 3. If people want to check their schedules and see if that will work, if they're interested in doing this. And this would be, we thought maybe, the time was available.
She said as long as you're out of there by 8:15, because they close at 8:30 and they have to clean up.
What time is that?
Maybe like, we thought maybe 7 to 8, or 6 to 8.
6:30 to...
6:30 to...
To 8 or whatever. She kind of blocked us off that 6 to 8.
Tea and cookies. So should we have people check their schedules and then we can, you've kind of penc, they have us penciled in?
They've penciled us in, I told her I'd confirm once everybody let you know, or me, or...
Can we just let the chair know the time we would be available so that we don't have to, well, actually, we have to... Can we approve this on a motion based upon final times available from all of us?
People are okay with it, and then we could hold that date, and then we could decide if we wanted to do 6:30 to 7:30, or 7 to 8, or, is that all right?
And it's not, it's not a posted meeting because there'll be no deliberation of any school committee items between people. It's a, it's more of a reach, outreach to the community, so I should, by thought I should mention that.
Make motion to hold this outreach on Tuesday, March 3.
To be determined.
Time to be determined between 6 and 8 p.m. at night.
Second?
Okay.
And next on the agenda is the consideration of an additional monthly school committee meeting. And before we go ahead on this, I'd like to hear what people's thoughts are on this. I know Paul had asked us to get this on the agenda.
I guess, I guess I define a meeting in two ways, is the quality of the meeting and the quantity of the meeting. Quality being how much we get accomplished, quantity being the time, minutes or time and hours. When those two diverge significantly, we need to get that back so that the quantity equals the quality of time in the meetings. So I guess I have a problem with this being on the agenda right now because I think we've diverged from quantity and quality too far to have an additional meeting. So I'm going to have to abstain from this vote.
Personally, I think we have more than one meeting a month. We have a, so many subcommittees going now. The Policy Subcommittee is meeting regularly, and now if we're going to contract, have someone come in, we're probably going to be meeting more often. We have negotiations that we're meeting for. We have the budget. When budget hearings start, we automatically have two meetings in January anyway. If there is a specific reason to have a second meeting, then we can call it. But to regularly have two meetings a month, again, I think we can use our time more wisely than to just schedule two meetings a month.
Well, I mean, my concern is I think we've got a lot on our plate. You know, these policies have been, keep getting pushed off. And, you know, we, we go to 11 o'clock at night, and I don't think it's, you know, after a couple hours here, it's like, I don't think it's productive to just keep going on and just to, so we get this once a month. You know, and even, I look at what we have for tonight. I mean, it's a lot to prepare for this meeting. I mean, school committees turn into this part-time, second job for me. And, you know, I, I mentioned it earlier about when we were doing the MCAS review, when we cut that report from the state, and it's in our package as informational. We could have a meeting just on that.
That's why it's under informational, because then more time needs to be spent on it before we take that apart.
Right, but I got it in my package, and that wasn't explained to me. That was just put in my package. So I'm looking at this thing, and I'm like, are you kidding me? It's like, I'm going to hear about MCAS tonight, and then I get all these, you know, negatives in there? You know, this isn't happening, that's not happening, and there's no explanation for it. There's no even cover letter to say, hey, listen, we haven't had a chance to digest this, we haven't had to go back to it. I mean, when I see a, you know, as an auditor, when I see a, a report like that, I'm saying, there better be follow-up next year. It's like, even if we have to hire somebody, come in, I want you to tell me that these problems aren't still existing. And, and the thing is, just that it's in the package, it's now a public document. Anybody can look at it, and they can pick it up and say, listen, what are you people doing? And we don't have any explanation for it. I mean, you can't, I applaud you for, for providing it to us, because that's great. And it is already out on the state website. But I just think there's a lot that's going on here. And, you know, we, I'm not saying we have to have, I, I would, if we deal with policy issues, those tend to take more time. I'd rather, I'd like to have a, a meeting designated just for policy issues rather than the operational stuff. I mean, I, I, we've looked at 23 towns around here, and 13 of them have to go twice a month, and 10 have, Abington included. You've got Avon, Braintree, Cohasset, East Bridgewater, I can hand this out. And, you know, who, who goes, who has two a month? Even East Bridgewater, they have one a month, but five times a year, they have, they have two months, they meet twice a month. This is just, this is just what I've, you know, going on to the school websites. But I just, I, I have a difficult time going to 11 o'clock at night and a volume of data, information that we have to digest for a meeting. So, I mean, this is, this is the information that I have for tonight. And I got it on, which was great, I got it on Thursday. But we also have other lives still, so we're supposed to digest all this? How effective can we be? I'm just, I have concerns about that. And I, I, I would, I'm not, I would like to have some flexibility where, you know, we, we can meet a second time per month. And I, I look at over the next six months, we got a, especially in the policy area, we got a lot of work to do.
I think in looking at the number of subcommittees, I mean, I did a quick tally here. We have at least, we have Governance, Budget, Negotiation, Building, CPAC, Website, MASC, Policy Review, that we're all meeting in these other subcommittees with. I'm, I'm feeling hopeful that by having MASC come in and work on the policy review, that that's going to clean up a lot of this and streamline it. And, you know, that's not to be said that if we didn't need to have an additional meeting, if something were to come up, that it's, that it couldn't happen. But I would have to agree with what Mike's saying, that, you know, we just need to get more efficient in our meeting time.
What does that mean? More efficient? What is, what does that mean? How are we not efficient? Because we ask, because I ask questions? That's, that's, I'm taking that as, you ask a lot of questions, these meetings drag on.
But I didn't, I wasn't aiming that at anyone.
Efficient, so how can we get more efficient? How can we get more efficient? Anybody? That was your statement. You said we need to be more efficient in the meeting. How is that possible?
I don't know, I'd have to think about how I'm going to, how I would define it, being more efficient. I don't know. I, I just think that there's ways of having discussion and conversation that we keep it on, on track and keep it to the point.
Okay, so then, Paul Hagerty, you asked too many questions, and you get us off topic. That's the way I take it.
I, well, I, I never mentioned anybody by name, Paul.
Well, that's the way I take it, though. I mean, I, I just, you know, you look at this...
Somebody could say that me mentioning the numbers that went along with the governance were unnecessary numbers. I, I mentioned those tonight because I found that interesting when constant, I never knew when constant contact came, goes out, how many hits we're able to track. To me, that was important. Maybe somebody else doesn't think that's important.
I thought that was outstanding. I thought that was great. But that's why I questioned early on about the MCAS data. I mean, I look at it, the, our, as a school committee, you know, we're the board, Pete is the CEO. Information gets filtered up, as it goes up, it gets more streamlined. I mean, if, if you provide me 30, you know, charts, why do I have to have someone go through 30 of them for me? If I have questions on it, I mean, what, I mean, I can see what's going on here, I can see the trends. If we have que, and that's why I even taught the school improvement plans. Why, why we, don't come and go over what they are, I can, I can read it. Tell me what happened, how'd you do last year? We're trying to streamline that process. That's why even on the MASC, the, the, the MCAS data tonight, that was my point, it was like, I don't know what value I'm getting by listening to somebody tell me, it's like, well, if you can see, we're up here, we're down here, we're up here, we're... And I'm not being disrespectful to anybody, but it's like, that's why I said at the end, what's my takeaway from tonight? Because I'm not going to remember any of those charts. I am going to remember the, the fact that the science curriculum needs to come along. The professional development has to be developed. I don't need a chart to tell me that. I need somebody to say, hey, listen, we don't have this, we don't have that. We had, you know, the, the professional development, Michael Shakovic, outstanding. I want someone to stand there and tell me, that guy did a great job. And all the teachers and everybody that were there, they were engaged. That's what people want to know. Teachers engaged, because we've got a lot of good people here, sitting at this table, too. It's like, that's what we want to hear, people engaged here. It's like, I don't need to, someone to go spend 40 minutes, and no disrespect, going through the, the charts. I don't know what the takeaway of that was. That's an efficiency, that's why I questioned it. But again...
Well, I guess, I guess going back to those charts, I think differently. I'm an engineer, so those charts are important to me. Those charts I can remember better than some of, than some of the bullets. So those charts, for me as an engineer, are much more important to me. Because I can recognize and I can remember a lot of those charts. I can, you know, picking out that fourth grade deficiency in math across all cohorts. I mean, those are spread out across multiple, multiple charts, but I can see that right away.
Right, and I, and I absolutely respect that, Mike. But do we need, but if you got it beforehand, do we need someone to go over it again? Because, because then they say, do you have any questions on that? And if you see that, you can ask the question. Maybe that's an efficiency, it's sort of like, would you have any questions on that? Yeah, provide the information to us. But, but as we analyze it, our questions should come out of our analysis. To, for someone to just sit there and present it to us, I, I kind of, I mean, if you have specific questions on a chart, absolutely. But I don't know, for us to flip through each one, I, I struggle with, with, with why we needed that. And there's absolutely no disrespect in, because they did a nice job presenting it, they did a very good job presenting it, and after putting up with me, but I just, you know...
If I could just, if, if the committee wants things differently, again, we're, we're crafting things based on past experiences to bring to the committee. And if you want to see something like that in a different format, I need to hear a, a voice from, from, you know, four different people.
Well, I will say this, and Mike brought this up a couple of months ago, as far as, you know, I know we get these packages on, you know, we got Thursday, Friday. But if there's like a policy or something like that, if, if the Subcommittee's done, can't we just send that out beforehand so we have more time? My concern is, we get this, this, there's a lot of stuff, and trying to get through it, like that MCAS stuff, for me, you know, those charts, I struggle getting through, trying to understand the relationships. So it's going to take me a little bit longer to get through that stuff. So if that stuff's available earlier to try to get that, maybe we, we can pick up efficiencies that way. Because I, I, like, this, this meeting, I struggled trying to get through all this stuff. There's a lot there.
If the committee wishes, what we could do is, as long as I can have these, I don't know what an attorney would call them, some legalese, some hooks in this, that you'll get draft documents, they may change prior to the meeting. And it's anticipated that these things will be provided to you, because at any moment, you know, things do change.
That was a good, I'm sorry, Sean presenting, I mean, that came...
I did not know that, that the sign with, donation was going to be asked to be accepted by the committee until, you know, days before this meeting. So as long as, like, the caveat is that they're drafts and they're anticipated items, I'd appreciate that, I can, I can start providing things, I can, in a more timely way.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can pick up efficiencies that way, so if we, I, I, so, so if you have more time to go through something, and, you know, you can, you know, sometimes answer your own questions.
Would also help me if when people see these things, and people do this, they say, you know... you know, I'm anticipating, I'm going to have some questions on this specific aspect of it, because I want to be able to do a good job, and we all want to be able to do a good job of answering your questions in a thoughtful way. You know, I, I understand, it's my responsibility, and it's our responsibility to know everything at this table, but there are certain nuances of things that I want to provide, you know, good research, thoughtful answers to. So, that'll help me, too, if people, if they look at it, could ask questions.
And, and Ellen, and Mike, I understand Cathy, as far as, we've got plenty of subcommittees. I think this idea of going, using MASC for the policies is, is, is great, it's going to relieve a lot of time, we'll be able to get back for other things. So, I won't, you know, make any, at this, I won't make any motion to add a second meeting. But, you know, appreciate the discussion on it, and if we can't pick up efficiencies, you know, that'd be great, so. And if it's even something that I need to change, I'm willing to listen.
Well, I think, I think it's always healthy to have a discussion like that.
So, I need to make sure people are tabling this.
Yeah, I'd like to tape it or whatever we-
Do we have to make a motion to table it, or?
Nope.
No, just table it.
Do nothing with it at the same time?
Thank you.
Next, we have on our agenda, the process for superintendent schools' performance evaluation for 2013, 2014. I think in our packet here, we have, Kathy has outlined some steps here, that I think she's going to walk through.
Okay, what I did, first of all, is, on top of the packet that you got, it says, "Evaluation of the Superintendent." This would be the policy for evaluation of the superintendent. And then I kind of put together a step-by-step process that each individual, it's hard to evaluate someone who is not in the same profession that you are. And it's our responsibility to do as subjective an evaluation of the superintendent as possible. So, I put a list of the steps that we could follow, and they are the steps that are included in the Massachusetts Model System for Educator Evaluation. I also created a form to make it easier for everyone as they, as they go through the process. Basically, the way the process should work, whether we choose to vote it to work this way or not, is that we would all provide our information to the chair, who would then summarize it, and it would be discussed at an open meeting. So, I've, for the two goals that Peter has chosen, that we agreed on last year, there's a separate, basically a worksheet for you to use. And to make it easier, I identified the standard and indicator that would be met by the particular goal that he chose. And I did run that by Peter, and I think he'll read what I, okay. And the last page, I put in a glossary. Being an educator, I know the terms, and we're really good at throwing educational jargon around, but you're not educators. So, I included a glossary on the back, so that some of these terms might be more easily identified. You would still need to use that Massachusetts Model System for Educator Evaluation rubric, because it basically gives you a picture of what it looks like, when it's being done on each of the levels, unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, or exemplary. So, that little write-up underneath there, basically identifies what you're looking at. And then there's a box on the form where you can put in your comments and suggestions.
Yeah, I found the tables that you put together, 1A, 1B, the first set of tables that have unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, exemplary, I found pretty easy to, easily to cross-reference to the superintendent rubric. It wasn't something that I really had to think about. I found it very, very easy to just go over there, take a look at what I needed to evaluate that particular area on, and then I just thought it was pretty easy just to go-
I mean, if we, if we agreed to use this process, then Ellen would have to set a date by which we would fill these sheets out, and get them to her, so that by our next meeting, we can actually do the evaluation.
And we would get an electronic version of this, right?
Yeah, I think I've got it, I had my computer fixed.
You never read my writing, so, you never read my writing, unless I put an X in unsatisfactory.
It should be in, it should be in my computer, if it didn't get lost when I had my computer fixed. And if it's not there, I can replicate it. It's called scanning.
Are we using the same system that we use for principals and teachers to do this?
No, using the same rubric from the state. Well, it's a different, it's a different rubric for superintendents as it is for principals. And then, the answer's no, because I include observations, I include, I do include goal-setting, I do include self-reflection, I include, I look at the evaluations that they write of staff, to make sure that those evaluations are providing the appropriate feedback. And then I also look at, not only an observation of them doing work around meeting, or professional development, or faculty meeting, just around total operation of the building, in terms of building manager.
But, but how are we, like, this is where I'm struggling with this, is how do we evaluate Peter if we don't have sort of multiple sources of input? Is, you know, whether it's observation, you know, talking with, with others? I mean, how do you know, how do we know that Peter's an effective communicator with the administrators, or even with the teachers? How, how, how we, what are we, what are we doing here? That's, I mean, even like the first goal, it's like, I don't even understand the first goal. So, how am I supposed to evaluate when I'm on the first goal? And, if I base it on what Peter said, reported last time, was it, was it ELA, we hit, math, we didn't?
Missed math.
Yeah, and we missed it. But, just because we missed it, doesn't mean it's necessarily a bad thing, because if we set our goals high, that's what you want to shoot for. So, I'm not saying that's a negative, but I don't know, based on this goal, to say, you know, and looked at the standard and the indicator, is it needs improvement, is it proficient, if we fall below what the goal said?
I guess, my, the way I would look at part of it anyways, is to, now that we have all those lovely colored charts, is to extrapolate that data, and see how close they are, because now we have the state averages, as well as what we did in Abington, and extrapolate that data, to see how close we really were. And I mean, if we were way, way, way off, then there might be something wrong, but if you extrapolate that data to what his, his goal was here, it looks fairly close. So, I think it would be a very positive.
Right, but, but then we, then you take that, and then you add in that audit report that we just got back, and I'm like, okay, are there issues here now?
Can I just really, really caution people about that audit? Because there were a lot of positives in that audit, I think, my opinion, this is my, of course I'm going to say this, there are a lot of positives in that, in that audit. There were also, what were identified as weaknesses and recommendations for improvement, that again, you know, we spoke about a little bit, and the budget is a perfect example. The state's not going to tell you that they're not giving you enough money, but every single thing in that audit would be solved with money, by the way, because we have the time and the people to pay them to do those things that we need to be done. For example, we laid off the curriculum people, which is part of the reason that that was a problem in the audit. The professional development that they said that, that we were providing without enough input in that audit, was the professional development that the state requires us to provide, and they're not going to put that in their own audit. So, it's not that the audit isn't being taken seriously, it absolutely is, and you will see, and there have already been steps taken, like the rounds model, that, you know, I'll go back to the evaluation piece, the, I was asked, and I appreciate that I was asked, because it was a healthy exercise for me, to create a document that is not my evaluation, and I'm not going to read it to you. I was asked to bullet out what I think some of the accomplishments were in the previous school year. So, that's in your packet. Paul had asked me to do that, and I, and I put that in here, and it was a good exercise. I bolted as much as I could, but for example, I found some things, like the instructional rounds model, needed more of an explanation than me saying instructional rounds model, or rounds instructional model, because people wouldn't know what that is. But that, for example, is a direct result of when the auditors left in an exit interview, we wanted to put something in place that raised the level of discussion about good teaching and practices in the Abbott and Public Schools. So, that's, that, that is a direct response to that audit, something that we can do without spending extra money, because we do it during the school day. So, I just, I just want you to know, that's, that's why this piece is in the evaluation.
I think this is very good, and I appreciate you doing this, because I think it gives a better picture of what you do and what you deal with, in very easy terms to understand, because sometimes you get these charts, and it's like, holy cow, trying to fit everything together. But there is like, one thing I will say, it's like, on number two, all faculty, staff, and administrative, totally hundred sixty certified individuals have been evaluated. And that's, that's great that it's been done, but what did we get out of it? I mean, to say, you know, I finished the marathon, but it took me twelve hours, and I walked both, like, was there, what did we get out of doing this, it was accomplished? But was there any, did it go well? Did it not go, were there problems? What's the feedback? And that's where I'm talking about, these multi-sources, multiple sources of input to the school committee, as far as, you know, we, we see you here, we, you're always available, you communicate effectively, you're great with that, but there's certain things that, you know, we're not going to see unless we get input from, from others. And it's not, it's not that, like, I'm here to, to question you, it's just sort of like, I want to make sure this is a healthy process, where, you know, we, it's not adversarial, it's just trying to get to, you know, providing feedback to you, that, that helps you and the district continue to grow. But I just, the way this, like, this, this policy, I don't, I don't really understand it, I know it came from the MASC, but the first one, clarify the, clarify for the superintendent, his or her role in the school system, as seen by the school committee. I don't, I don't, we've hired a superintendent, and we need to clarify what his role is? His or her role is? That, that, I, that concerns me, that we don't, that we have to clarify the role. I mean, he's got a, he has a job description that we haven't reviewed since February of 2007, the same one. But when it comes to these goals, I don't know how to, to, to score this piece of it. I mean, what Peter provided, I, I think is, I, this, what Peter provided works for me, because I could take that and just sit down with Peter, or go through it, you know, follow up on that, and get some feedback from him, and I could, I don't, I can provide information back, but it's like, when it comes to this goal, I don't know how to, I don't know how to score it.
And in this, again, I'm not going to read it to you, I promise, but each of the following items could be broken down further in my memo, in more detail, examples, indicators, elements, descriptors, in multiple areas, as needed. So, I, when you have a question about a hundred and sixty-one individuals, I can show you the data that was submitted on that, I can tell you, I can show you the number of observations, how they were done, I just need, you know, you let me know, we can meet, and I can-
But I mean, that's part of the process, too.
Show you what you want.
That, that's part of the process, too. I mean, when he says he's going to do something, as he's doing it, he's got to have documentation that he's done it. If he says he's going to have collaborative educational leadership at the district level, then he's got to prove that he's had these meetings, and that he's collaborated with people. And if we want his evidence, we just have to go and ask for it. And I think a lot of what he gave us in his sheet does identify some of these things. He says, "Integration of 21st century skills." Well, okay, Peter, I need to do, I need to evaluate on this, can you show me what you did that it's considered, you know, 21st century skills? I have the ability to go and ask him that, in order to make my determination.
That's a perfect money example, because that's something we all know we need to do, that's something Abington needs to do, and we have stipended positions, people that work after school, has, to help teachers. In other districts with more resources, that the state visits and audits, they've got full-time people who are technology integration specialists, and that's why in the budget presentation, you'll see a request for that item, so.
But, but everything we're getting, though, is, is straight from Peter. We don't, we don't have any other input from anybody else to basically confirm what Peter's telling us, and that's where my, my concern is, because the teachers, when they're evaluated, you know, that, it's based on observation, discussions with others, and I'm sure even the principals that way, but we're, we're treating Peter a little bit differently, where we're just taking him on his word that everything's on, and I'm not, and again, it's not, I'm questioning Peter, it's like, I just want to make sure there's everything fit together, does it make sense? It's like, that, you know, if you, if you talk to, you know, Mr. McCurtin, and it's like, how's everything working, or another principal, it's like, well, you know, this one said, I think he's terrific, it's like, this one, I think he's a jerk because of this, this, and this. I can't get anything done here, I'm stymied. It's like, okay, then, it's like, if you hear that a couple of times, because I think the, the reason what we, I look at evaluation is, you want to head off a problem that could create down the road. If you don't effectively evaluate Peter, and I'm not saying there's an issue, but I'm like, as a committee, whether it's Peter or somebody else, it's like, you got to make sure you do your due diligence on it, just to say, you know, he told me, so it's got to be true. Well, it's the old Ronald Reagan line, trust but verify, you know, and I think that's only, and that's not a criticism of Peter, that's just part of the process, to make sure that the principals and others feel comfortable with him. Because I look at, again, I hate to bring it up, but it was in the, it was in there, but that, the evaluate, teacher evaluations, there wasn't positive feedback from the teachers on how that process went, they weren't happy with it. So, we did a hundred and sixty-one of them, but like, so, that's where I need some feedback to say, okay, well, you did it, but how did it go?
It was a new tool that the state implemented for districts across the Commonwealth, and we were forced into this model. So, people don't like changing.
Right, right. But without having that report, I would have just had to rely on Peter saying, oh, well, we did it. Well, what else did we do? I mean, it'd give Peter an opportunity to say, yeah, well, we fell down here, we didn't do this and that, and I just don't, I, it, this can't be just a perfunctory process. There's got to be some real value to Peter and the district. I mean, where's the personal growth, or personal development for Peter in this? If we just keep saying, you're doing a great job, and it's like, over a while, you start to believe that, and it's like, it might be some areas where we could, we could help him, to say, hey, how about over here?
It'd be very difficult to try to sit down with teachers and interview, because you'd have to have a tremendous cross-section of that, because you could get the wrong cross-section.
Right.
And now you're talking, you have a hundred and sixty or so of teachers and parents in the system.
But I'm even thinking, just like, you know, you've got a couple of principals, you talk to, you know, AEA, you know, how do you guys think things are going? And I know, you know, and I would, and it's not where you're just taking it, it's like, oh, they said this. It's like, because there's always between, with, you know, the management structure, that's, you always have to walk that fine line, and like, okay, taking it in, but if you hear things, you know, you talk to Peter, it's like, no, this is why this was said about me, it's like, because of this, this, and this. And so, you know, I understand you have to balance all that, but I just want to make sure I'm doing my due diligence in providing any feedback to Peter, that, you know, it's just not always, just, everything's always rosy. There's got to be some growth here, too, and if we didn't make the fifty-one percent, someone had said that, like- And if we didn't make the 51%, someone had said that like, well, you were crazy to do that. Well, that's crazy's not necessarily a bad thing when you're setting your goals. It's something to strive for. Because if you're always hitting it, it's like, I don't know.
I don't know how to shoot for less than that.
Paul, what do you suggest? Because it is our responsibility to evaluate Peter. And I think this is the closest that we can come to being subjective because I can ask him for evidence for anything that he puts down in his goals, and hopefully he's got it somewhere. And if he doesn't, then his evaluation would reflect it.
Right, but I am, I'm telling you, I'm struggling with the fact that I have an audit report that has a lot of stuff in there that I can't, until I get answers to those statements in the audit report or the concerns, I can't, I can't do an evaluation, an effective evaluation of Peter because I need to understand it. Just like you said, you need to take time to understand what's in the audit. Because I can't ignore that report. It's there now. And what's, you know, how is the district going to handle that? I just, and that's where I'm talking about, there's multiple sources of, how do we explain that?
Let me say this too. You do perform audits. I would bet you that your audit process and your audits are vastly different than what you have in your packet. I think, and I don't want to undermine or, again, the audit, some of the audit suggestions would be easily fixed with increased funding. It's not a lack of effort on the part of the school department that provided some of that in the audit. And yet, you will never get a DESI audit that says the state's not providing enough money for you to do these things. So I just want to, I just can't emphasize that enough.
And frankly, I remember in my interview during that audit, telling them that finances was keeping us from doing a lot of the things we wanted to do. That didn't show up in the final report. However, it still brings us back to the fact that we are responsible for evaluating Peter every year. And the state has given us a process by which to do it. And we don't have to follow the state if you don't want to, but we do have to evaluate Peter because we're actually past the point at which he should be setting his goals for the fall, for this year. We haven't evaluated him on the goals that he chose for last year.
I pulled back on the submission of that because I want to, obviously I want to wait to see what this year provides so that I can.
Which makes sense.
Get the feedback that Paul's talking about before you move forward, obviously.
Because part of our evaluation should be giving him some direction as to what we want him to be able to do in the future.
Well, let me ask you, have we ever done that in the evaluation process? We've never done that. I haven't seen, I haven't seen an evaluation that is a public document that has given Peter any direction for development. I haven't, I haven't seen an evaluation that does that. Because I think, I think what we're trying to do right now is the first time that this has been done.
Last year, we tried using the computerized system, which I did not find very effective or very easy to use.
Because I, I just want to make sure we set, we showed to the district and parents and taxpayers that we take performance reviews seriously for the superintendent as we do for teachers and principals. That again, it's not just perfunctory. It means something. And I, based on what we've had in the past for reviews, I don't think it is. And again, I mean, I, I don't, personally, I don't have any issues with, I don't have issues with Peter as a superintendent in Abbotton. I just want to make sure we have a solid process so we can give him the feedback that he needs. And in some respects, the support. Because it would, it would be a positive thing to, for the school committee to say, hey, listen, you know, you're doing a good job and we want you here. You continue it, but we want you to grow here, here and here. So it shouldn't be a negative.
And I think that some of these that are bulleted here, when you look at it, you totally appreciate what's going on. I mean, under management and operations, five different school buildings serving different age levels with just under 2,000 students. I mean, you don't always think of those numbers and it's spelled out right here.
Right, right. That's why I like this.
And I like this.
I like this. And I, because I think it does, one thing though, over 15 different employee agreements with 250 individuals were contractually legally and ethically managed. That right there, I mean, I've, you know, we've had a few meetings on the negotiations essence, and, you know, you don't have to be a rocket scientist to figure out the, the level of concern, you know, commitment that Peter has to make sure that this is a fair and good deal for everybody. And, you know, you sit in these meetings, you know, Peter, this gets to him at his core. That's important that he deals with this stuff. Because I'm sure it's not one of those things where it's like, you know, okay, I shut the door at the building and I go home. It's like, no, he thinks about this stuff. I mean, that's 15 different agreements that he's, he's working with. That's important to know.
But that would be an observation.
Right.
Like you could use it, you observed that on November such and such, 2014, during negotiations, that Peter, whatever, that would be part of.
Right.
That would be part of what you're saying is that you want to involve more. So you want to get more feedback so that your observations during that example was perfect.
Exactly, right.
And I also think that the building committee work, all of that is like so public.
Oh, absolutely.
Professional development, you attended recently the professional development, you saw, I mean, Peter made that happen along with all of us, all the subcommittees that he attends.
Right, and even on that, that's a good, because that would be where, for me personally, I, the feedback I would give on that one, if you don't, if you don't mind, because I brought up.
It's a public process.
Yes, is that, I said that.
We don't know if to say yes.
When, yeah, well, is when we have it, it's like when we have something like that, which, it really was, it was excellent. That was a great, you know, glad I took a vacation day for that one. But is, the only thing I would recommend is that next time, we make sure we get the principals, assistant principals, audit at a table, sitting with everybody. Because so, and you know, you could put the high school principal with the elementary teachers and just mix around so everybody's there. And Peter's at another table with somebody. That, to me, that looking at, you know, meeting somebody different, you know, that would be my recommendation, is like, we look at opportunities for that, you know?
You've already started doing his evaluation. You've observed, observed him in the process of doing his job, and you've made a recommendation for the future.
Right, yeah.
All right, that's what an evaluation is.
Oh, I know.
And that's what that big box that says comments and suggestions refers to.
Right, but I, but this here, I don't know what to do with this.
So if you don't want to, you don't have to do that. That was just to make it easier for you. If you don't want to do that, don't do it. Just put your comments and suggestions in. But we've got to get all that information together so that we can actually arrive at an evaluation of him in an open meeting. Not that you haven't been doing that already.
So if I, so determine what standards and indicates are covered within the goals. So is that something we have to do tonight?
No, I already did that for you.
Which is?
They're right here.
Okay, but, and this is, see, this is where it breaks down because I don't know what to do with this.
Okay, that's, that's in here.
Yeah, I know.
Return to the rubric.
Right, no, I know where it is, but it, but if I don't understand the goal, you're asking me to evaluate something I don't understand.
Then don't do it. Just do the comments and suggestions section.
All righty.
What's going to happen is.
I think your recommendation would be, could you change your goal for next year? So that you might support this one this year or not, but then next year, you want more common sense. Like you don't want jargon, you want yield.
Right.
And that's pretty clear to me and you're not evaluating me.
Right.
So I think that that would be something that you would say in your recommendation to Peter.
Because I do think some of the way these goals are written, I actually think it does a disservice to Peter. Because it does, because if it's not, I really do.
And again, I will, I've said this a number of times, and I, and I feel self-conscious doing a lot of talking under this section of the agenda because we're talking about my evaluation, but those goals were written as an example, and this maybe even makes it worse, Paul. These were written as an example in the district so that people could align their goals as a district around student achievement and data. So my goal around student achievement data was aggressive, I use the word aggressive, and it expected a great deal of Abbotton because that's what Abbotton's kids deserve. And that it provided alignment throughout the district for people to use that data like you saw tonight by grade level, by subject area, by classroom, to improve student achievement. Because each, with this, with this rollout of this new model, each teacher had to write a student achievement goal and provide data around that so that we can get the analysis of data to improve instruction going on at the classroom level. So that's why I was forced to do it that way because I wanted to be a good walk the talk. My own student achievement goals are aggressive, they use data to improve student performance.
Can we agree that we will all submit information to Ellen on Peter's evaluation? Either by using this form and the rubric from the state or just a narrative?
Just a narrative.
Get it to Ellen. Ellen would have to give us an idea of how far in advance it would need to be.
And I'm willing to meet with people, provide more information or data or whatever. And I understand I'm the one providing it, but I can, I can label the source that it comes from, whether it's Department of Education or what we've submitted to the Department of Education or from whatever department.
Now, it looks like the evaluation of Superintendent Appendix A, it looks like she needs these comments by February 1st. Am I misreading this?
We agree that we would not be able to follow the timeline. That's from my contract because of the timing of the MCAS data and the student achievement data. So we had talked about that before. It's not going to meet that.
We agreed last year when he presented his goals that we would adjust the timeline because of the need to have the MCAS results.
So you can rush it to meet that timeline and not have all the information? That seemed like the wrong thing to do.
Well, in, in the next contract, it's actually June 1st. It got pushed out. Because I think with the data and everything, we want to make sure it's like, we, you know, you go through a process that's of value, not just saying, oh, we've got to shrink everything into two months.
Right.
And so.
So do you need a date?
I'm going to need a date. So then anticipating a lot of, you know, back and forth.
I guess, Peter, when do you need to put forth your next year's goals? Is there a contract date or is there a date that's required for you to set out and have set of goals?
I'd have to go back and take a look exactly what that contract says about October 1st. Well, this is the last contract though, the next.
Maybe your new one doesn't start until July 16.
Right. Great. Right, this one says for October 1st, so we've already missed that deadline.
But we can't expect him to come up with.
No, I wouldn't.
New goals until he's got our feedback on the last year.
So I'd like to have your feedback on this, and then as I establish my new goals, I'm going to be asking for your feedback. Even though you've given me this evaluation, I'm open to your feedback about what those goals should be going forward. This needs to, I need to work with my bosses on what.
Well, it should, it should be an open process. I mean, when you're setting goals, you should be setting them with whoever is supervising you.
It doesn't have a choice on two. It has to be following DESA, so you have to have a student goal.
Right.
And just like everybody else, and then you have to have.
Do you, I'm just trying to think, would a date of mid-December be unreasonable to provide the chair?
I don't think so. I don't know, do you?
That's fine.
I'm not trying to like.
Can we come up with an exact date though?
Yeah, no.
Yeah, I'm just. Somewhere around the 20th maybe or?
December 20th?
Yeah.
Okay.
How about that Friday, December 19th?
Okay.
You know that that's the first.
Because I know Olivia's coming home that day.
Oh.
That's the only reason I know.
I know it's not your anniversary.
So, so when we do this, we'd, so per his contract, it's a superintendent be valued by the committee on an annual basis using Massachusetts Educated Evaluation Model Rubric for Superintendents. And that's what we are going back to.
That's that, right.
Okay.
So Ellen gets everything by the 19th, compile it, Peter can probably see it by the middle of January, and then he can set out his new.
Well, when we send it, when we send it to her, we should see it to Peter.
It's copied on it.
And at that point, you can start your new set of goals for next year.
Pending committee approval.
So the only motion is just to provide Ellen with.
Comment.
Comment, feedback by, on or before December 19th.
And Peter gets copied on it.
Right, right. So we don't, we won't take any action on this process as presented right now.
And I guess technically, the process is that Appendix A that's in my contract.
Exactly, right, right. So.
That doesn't mean I don't, I mean, I, again, my, my work here is only as good as the input and feedback of five different bosses, so I need to know regardless of what this says, I'm very interested in that feedback.
Now, is this, is this online? Can, can you, could?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could I try using it online?
Sure.
Because it might be, you know.
Which?
Oh, you're talking about baseline.
This is, this is on, online.
Yeah, yeah, but, but, no, what I'm saying.
Published.
No, no, I know, I'm talking about to evaluate, because the teachers, you use the rubrics to evaluate the teachers. Is there an application that you can use to evaluate the principal, the superintendent? So at the end of it, I can just push a button and print off whatever?
The problem with that is, is it, for guidance counselors, principals, superintendents, assistant superintendents, there isn't a classroom observation walkthrough where you can say, this is a teaching move that we're looking for. So yes, it's online, but it's very different than what the teachers have.
Oh, no, right, but, but is this something that?
It's basically a blank form that you'd populate with text.
Yeah, it really is just like that box at the bottom of the page.
So it looks like this, Paul, actually.
No.
Oh, it's not, it's not something like this?
No, it looks more like this.
Oh, that's low value. No, all right.
That's awesome.
So do we need to?
Make a motion on that?
Make a motion.
Make a motion to provide.
Feedback or comments to Ellen by December 19th.
Yes.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Paul, Kathy.
And thank you to Kathy for doing the outline, and I like Paul's questions.
Oh, I thought what Peter did was, that was very, very good.
Thank you for.
Because you hit on all the standards.
Yeah.
I'm available for more information on any of that if people are interested. Do you need your dates to remember? Or, oh, sorry.
Kathy?
Okay, in the, because of the time limitations here, what I can do is I have typed up notes from many of the workshops I went to. I'll just pass them out to you, I'm not going to go over them. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. So I'll just pass those down. I think what, oh, I also have some handouts from some other workshops that I went to that the information isn't on there, but if there's something you're interested in, let me know and I'll get it to you. I think of most interest at this point is the results of the resolutions that I represented you for. I should say, all of the resolutions and the amendments eventually did pass, but it was quite a spirited debate. Resolution one, greater transparency and accountability for out-of-district placements. The resolution was actually rewritten and then approved under the rewriting. It says, "The Massachusetts Association of School Committees, therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of Schools Committees file for and/or support legislation that would require institutions providing out-of-district placements for education to file end-of-year reports with the Department of." that would require institutions providing out-of-district placements for education to file end-of-year reports with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, including but not limited to detail on any corporate earnings and stock offerings, schedules, all staff and board salaries, and an independent financial audit consistent with that required of educational collaboratives. And that was resolved after it was rewritten. Resolution 2, on support for pre-kindergarten in Massachusetts. The question that we had was, is this gonna turn into another unfunded mandate? Which was a topic hotly discussed at the meeting. The resolution did pass 69 to 34, and there were three abstentions. And the reason it did pass is there was wording in here that says they're supporting legislation to provide appropriation for universal pre-K. Resolution 3, charter school reform, um... Did pass. The resolution on fingerprinting also passed. The resolution on earmarking was another hot topic. Although people wanted the money for schools, they felt it was not fair for, to ask for it to be mandated, but it passed 60 to 31 with two abstentions. The resolution, resolution on unfunded mandates and new testing, um... Passed as well, and the resolution on the assessment system did pass, again, 69 to 21 with three abstentions. And that was, again, with a lot of debate over the benefits of park and Common Core. And then both of the bylaw proposals were approved.
Thank you again for attending, Kathy, for your back.
Was it a good turnout?
Yes, it was very well attended.
I did a presentation on Friday at 4:00, and I couldn't believe how many people were there.
Still, wow.
Yeah, but we were surprised.
Well, you know, you bring 'em in.
Yeah.
I felt bad when I heard you were doing it at 4:00, I figured you just have an empty room. I've done those late day presentations.
That's what we expected.
Do you need your dates to remember?
Sure.
Uh, dates to remember, Wednesday, December 3rd, Green Wave Boosters meeting at the police station at 7:00 PM. Thursday, December 4th is an end service early release day. December 10th is the high school holiday concert at Abington High School at 7:00 PM. On Wednesday, December 17th is, we have the Woodsday Holiday Concert at Frolio at 7:00 PM. On Thursday, December 18th, uh... We have the Frolio Holiday Concert at the Frolio at 7:00 PM. And on Friday, December 19th, we've got the Abington Community Band Holiday Concert at the, in, the Abington Town Choir at Abington High School at 7:00 PM. And as I read these, I'm just excited that someday we'll have a building where all of these events can take place for our school system, and proud of where it occurs. And I know we're very proud of the performances, it'd be nice to be proud of where it's performed. Just so that people are aware, we have another building committee meeting on December 2nd. That's not on this list, but that'll be at the Abington Police Department at 6:00 PM.
6:00.
And is there any other date? Do we have like a football game or something coming up?
December 6th, Saturday.
8:00 PM.
Gillette Stadium.
And we have signs over there, if anybody needs one, they can get it at the law office of Sean Riley. Twenty dollars, support the boosters.
Okay, next we have the report of Assistant Superintendent for Pupil Personnel Services, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you. First is the update of professional development. We had our professional development day on October 31st, our last one. It was a full day, so we had a variety of things going on within the district. We had, reference tonight, you heard, a variety of trainings with the FOS kits and invisions training. There was also a variety, looking at the art, PE, reading specialists, speech and language, school psychs, nurses, looking at a variety of different kinds of professional development. So that was a busy day for everyone. And then at the secondary level, you heard a reference tonight also, the training from Michael Shackleford regarding grading and assessment, that we hope that will continue throughout the next coming year and years to come. So I'll keep you posted on that. Upcoming is December 4th, which is next week. That's an early release day, and at the secondary level, there'll be school-based continuation of assessment and grading. And at the elementary staff level, there's going to be continuation of FOS and invisions trainings. The circuit breaker audit, we just recently had our circuit breaker audit, actually, last week, and we had a perfect audit. So I wanna thank Deb Keough and our retired school accountant, Paulette Batson, for all the work that they do on that. That happens every few years. It's a lot of work that goes into that, and then they cross-check everything that's submitted over the summer, and then they come and they check all the bills. So, happy to report that the audit went perfectly, so thank you to everybody.
Do they give you any recommendations when they finish that, or is it just saying, hey, Liz, you're in compliance?
Actually, she said, you're one of the lucky ones that we didn't take money from.
It's a fiscal audit, it's not compliance audit.
Oh, okay, all right.
So we were happy with that. And then she said the letter will be sent as well, so we'll be able to send that along eventually. Coordinated program review, our next mid-cycle will be in the area of special education, and that will happen on December 15th. And Matt Nixon will be the chairperson from the DESE, and he'll be coming in to do a mid-cycle review on student files, autism procedures, and will be interviewing me. So I'll let you know how that goes. We're preparing for that.
When is that?
Summer 15th, on a Monday. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My first item is the school building committee update. As Peter mentioned, we have a full building committee meeting on December 2nd at 6 o'clock at, at the police station. We've begun, a lot is going on right now. We're into our Friday morning working group meetings that happen most, they will be happening most Friday mornings. We also have a second round of programming meetings that are currently being scheduled with teachers and department heads and adminis, and administrators, looking at the actual rooms and what goes in the rooms. There'll be a furniture consultant at these next rounds of meetings, talking about the types of furniture and the types of items that'll go into the room, which then coincides with electrical and data drops while they're doing their first, their, the beginnings of the, of the drawings. So, it's very busy. Next week, we have PAR Engineering, who is the, they're the environmental engineers. They'll be doing test, more test pits and borings behind the current high school, to actual places where footings will be, where the synthetic fields will be, looking at drainage, looking at substructures. So there will be activity in the backfields on Tuesday. Working also with Peter Serino in trying to limit damage to the tur, to the current grass, but this is a have-to-do. This isn't, where, where they wanna put actual foundation pieces, they need to know it's not that simple. Any questions on that? Two other pieces that have to do with the building, but more have to do with the facility itself. Part of the initial feasibility study included a traffic study, which looked at traffic throughout the complex, but also at the intersection of Route 18 and Glenowits Way. One of the recommendations from the traffic study was adjusting of the lights and the traffic flow going north on 18 from Brockton towards Waymouth, the left-hand turn into Glenowits Way. Because Route 18 is a mass department transportation roadway, the town can't do anything to it, they need to petition to Mass DOT. So we are working with the town, the highway department, and our engineers to make that request to Mass DOT, and to start that process going, and I'm not sure what Mass DOT's process is, but to, to, to really look at that intersection. The second piece that also is a, is a com, is a complex, and I mean building complex issues, this is the request or the need for second egress out of that high school library, town hall area off Glenowits Way. So we're also working with, with the town to look at, continue to investigate options for a second egress. An emergent, thank you, an emergency egress. Those are kind of the two, those are also the two big pieces.
Now, on the, the traffic study, is that adding like a light so you could take a left there, so you...
The recommendations from the traffic, well, I'm trying, one of the recommendations is to change the light timing.
Okay.
Have an arrow, and the second is to have the, the left of the two lanes a turn-only lane. So it wouldn't be wide, there's no recommendation to widen any intersections. It's to do lighting and paint.
Okay.
Changing the light.
Yep, okay. But that has to get, is that, this petition has to get, and that could take time.
Yeah, that's Mass Department Transportation.
And they come up and do traffic studies and...
I would assume that they come and do their own study as well. But that's something that we're, that we're, we're starting that prog, process early.
It's important to the building committee to vigorously advocate for the improvements from the traffic study to be implemented, and to thoughtfully research with the town, the secondary emergency egress. This is the time to get those things done, if it's possible. We don't, we don't have any control over whether or not the Department of Transportation will agree and allow those to occur. And also, with the secondary egress, because someone said to me once, and I think it's true, if it wasn't wet, you'd already see a building on it. Because people have developed Abington to the point where, if it's not a piece of wetland, it's already got a building on it. Now, it's not absolutely true, but I think, you know, as people look at the area around where we're sitting right now, it's either privately owned, or we're surrounded by wet. So, it doesn't mean that we don't, we give up. We just wanna be very thoughtful about considering that. It's a town situation, 'cause there's a library, there's a town hall, there's a school. It's not just the school, so...
FY15 budget update. I think that we all knew last week, we got a bit of a scare with Governor Patrick regarding mid-year cuts. And as he said, wouldn't, he wasn't recommending cuts to education, but he was recommending cuts to local aid, which directly impacts town funding, which would then impact school funding. The next day, the Senate President came out and said that he would not support any of that, and our understanding is the local aid piece is, is, it won't, the cut to local aid won't happen. But again, with the new governor starting in five weeks. So, I did have a meeting with town hall regarding the possibility of 9C cuts, and really, the feeling from everyone is, let's just hold off and, and see what happens in the next couple of weeks. So, I can tell you that in terms of our spending and our, our, how we're trending, we're trending good right now, we're trending fine. If we were the, if we were to make significant mid-year cuts, it would be significant. But to even talk about what that is, not knowing numbers, not knowing the town side of it, it, I, I wouldn't even be able to tell you where we are. I can tell you that we're locked in for natural gas for this year, and the, we do our own natural gas in the town. We're part of the town contract for electricity. So, that's also locked in for this year. We are anticipating a significant increase in electrical costs for next year, but that will be in our budget for next year.
And that's based on increased rates?
Correct.
Nothing that we're doing?
No. No, yeah, not increased usage, increased cost. And that's what I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, one, one, sorry, I'm, we are, like Mike said, we are meeting as a building, a budget subcommittee, and we are planning to roll out the budget, is a budget packet that's gonna look a little bit different than it's looked over the last few years. So, that's what Paul, Mike were alluding to, that just try to consolidate, but also provide greater transparency.
Okay, under new business, our next school committee meeting will be on Tuesday, January 6th, 2015, at 7:00 PM, with our preliminary 2016 budget hearing at 7:30 PM that night. And also, in the month of January, we have our meeting on Tuesday, January, January 27th here as well.
Informational, quickly?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
No, no, just before you close the meeting. Under informational, I've included a copy of the Green Wave Gazette, which I think is really great. And I think it's good that you see it. And then the much-talked-about district review from DESI. You know, there'll be more on that specifically, but there'll also be more on that as you look at district improvement plans, even in, even in what I reported tonight, the instructional rounds, as I talked about, was because when the auditors left, we listened to them. And then, a proposed draft of the school calendar, until the professional development days are on there. We're not asking for people to necessarily consider that. You know, before you've got a, a ti, time to look at it, and you know where those professional days, professional development days are scheduled. Those aren't on there yet, I don't believe, so...
Do the Green Wave Gazette, is that out there electronically, too?
Actually, it's, certain articles and things are picked up nationally.
That's, it was excellent.
Published nationally. So one of the great things about teaching English these days is, you know, when I turned into paper, it wasn't published nationally. These days, with electronic media, some, some of our high school work gets published coast to coast. So, it's pretty cool.
And we won't be coming back.
Won't be coming back, too.
For the purpose of discussing collective bargaining strategies with the Abington Education Association.
Thank you.
Yes.
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 Okay. Yep?
He's letting his head, he keeps his mouth shut. Thank you very much. How was the Powderpuff game?